The time is now five o'clock. The Warwick Finance Committee is open. I want to seek a motion for acceptance of the minutes for the committee meeting held on March 20th. Do I have a motion?
Motion favorable.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Members of the committee, I received a request from the mayor's office. If we could look at PCR 24-23, 2023, formerly 2023-088, repairs to engine 13. The administration requested that we hold that item until the next scheduled meeting for April 17th. May I have a motion to hold?
Motion, so move.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We will now move on to PCR 37-23 as part of the consent calendar. May I have a motion for acceptance of the minutes for the meeting held on March 20th, 2023?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Bid number one, bid 2023 for 11, purchase of 2024 international 65-foot bucket truck. Good evening, Kristi. Please identify and state your title and name.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Kristi Moretti, Public Works Business Manager. Public Works is requesting to award the purchase of the aerial tree trimming truck to Q's Equipment in M. Hurst, New Hampshire. A little bit of a backstory real quick. This is the third time we've been before the council to purchase a tree trimming truck. The first two have fallen through. So this truck will be available sometime after July 2023, and it will be an additional difference of $38,667.30 from the second time that this vehicle was awarded. We've been in touch with the administration and finance department, and they've approved the increase for this purchase. So we are looking to buy this truck. It's $208,500.
Thank you, Kristi. And this is coming out of the...
Lease purchase.
Thank you so much. I'm having my computer's freezing on me, so I was going to go read the code. 499-0449, capital lease purchase. Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the committee?
No, thank you.
Are there any questions from members of the council? Are there any questions from members of the public? Thank you, Kristi. Bid 2024-006, sand, grit, gravel, loam, and stone. Kristi?
Public Works is requesting to award this bid to five of the vendors that submitted a bid for the purchase of material for the department in the amount of $110,000 for a two-year period, will be July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2025.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the committee? Questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Thank you so much. Bid 2024-007, spring repairs and related works. This is found on page eight. Kristi?
Public Works is requesting to award this bid for our spring repairs and related work to Palmer Spring and Woodward Spring Shop in the amount of $100,000 for a two-year period, July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2025.
Thank you so much, Kristi. Any questions that haven't already been sought from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Thank you. Bid 2024-008, hydraulic parts and repairs.
Again, another two-year bid for the department. We are requesting to award to TriPower Sales and Service for hydraulic parts and repairs in the amount of $60,000 for two years, July 1, 23, to June 30, 25.
Thank you, Kristi, and thank you for answering the simple questions. I had any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be 2024-016, mental health clinician. Good evening, Major.
Good evening, Major Andy Sullivan for the Police Department. The Police Department is seeking a 56-6 exception, a bid in order to renew for one year our mental health clinician contract through the Providence Center. The Police Department is seeking spending authorization in the amount of $59,630 to fund this position. The clinician works full-time within our Police Department and responds with offices to emergency mental health calls, conducts follow-ups on a non-emergency, on non-emergency calls, and conducts wellness checks with members of our mental health crisis response team. The clinician position has been part of our department's mental health response plan since 2014, and we wish to continue this extremely important position. If approved, the cost would be funded through budget code 321-0478, opioid capital outlay, please.
Thank you, Major. If members of this committee are okay, I would like to divert to the council president quickly for a comment and question. Council President McAllister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Major. I just, I just want to tell a quick informative thing about how important this position is, that I met with a senior, I told the story last year, I met with a senior at a different function, and she told a story about how she was scammed. She fell for one of those scams that happens unfortunately to our residents from time to time. And she was embarrassed, and she was upset, and she went into the police station to, to talk to somebody, to file the complaint, and really was having a difficult time. And this clinician, she was there, and the police officer that was taking the report, he noticed that she was in crisis and brought her over. And she really did a great job to just help this woman feel okay. And she tells that story a lot, the woman, I won't mention her name here, but she's told that, that story a number of times. And I just think that's, it's just a real-world example of what this position does. And, you know, it's really important to, to take a step back sometimes to see the stuff that we're voting on, the stuff that the city and the taxpayers are using their taxes on really has a direct impact. And this is something that really affected this woman's life in a positive way. So this has my, my full support, Major, and I just wanted to share that story with the council and the members of the public here today of how important it is to have somebody there when, when someone's in crisis, and that was really important.
Thank you. Pass that along to her.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any questions for members of the committee? Councilman Foley.
Say for the record, the benefit, the $50,000 covers the salary and benefits?
Yes, so the $59,630 covers her salary, and her benefit package is through the Providence Center, which is separate from what we're paying.
Okay, thank you. I just want, I asked that question before, but just have it on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for members of the committee? Questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Questions from members of the public? Thank you, Major.
Thank you.
Bid 2024-010, find on page 19. Good evening, Kristi. Please identify, name department.
Kristi Moretti, Public Works Department. This request is for the HVAC services for Thayer Warburton Arenas, for the specialty room, so to speak, where the compressor equipment is located. We are asking for $50,000 for one year to environmental systems, again, July 1, 23, to June 30, 24.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the committee? Questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Questions from members of the public? Thank you, Kristi. We are now at the point of the bid package where we will call on members of the committee, the council, then the public, if there's any items they would like to pull from the bid package for discussion. Councilman Foley. The councilman requested bid 2023-055, vehicle body repair and painting. That is number 11 on the bid package. And that is also found... That is found on page 48. Are there any other items that members of the committee would like to pull? Are there any items that members of this council would like to pull for discussion from the bid package? Councilman President McAllister.
Thank you. The last item, 2023-414.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is found on page 96. Any other items from members of the council? Items from members of the public? Oh, correction. I would also like to pull bid 2024-014, reaccreditation services. I'm sorry? Council President did the last one. I'm requesting bid 2024, that's fine, 014, reaccreditation services. And that is found on page... 69. Members of the public? Are there any items from the bid package, members of the public? Hearing none, we'll, we'll go and order. Councilman Foley, well, hold on one moment. Number 11, there it is. I got sticky pads everywhere. Councilman Foley recommended 20, discussion on bid 2023-055, vehicle body repair and painting. This is found on page 48. Councilman Foley.
Good evening.
Good evening. Major, please identify yourself and department.
Major Andy Sullivan for the Police Department.
Thank you.
It's a quick question, Major. What, what are we doing? What are we painting? Is it from accident repairs, that type of body painting?
Yes, so, for example, one example is if we harvest an old police vehicle, we may swap parts that may require some bodywork or paint. It's for minor accidents that we don't want to put an insurance claim in for, that we handle in-house, for lack of a better term. And we contract out with several vendors that we have a rotating list that we use for this work.
Thank you. I'm set.
Thank you, Councilman. Further questions from members of the committee? Further questions on bid 2023-055 from members of the council? Further questions from the public? Further questions, comments from the public on bid 2023-055? Thank you, Major.
Thank you.
The next item will be bid 2024-014, reaccreditation services. I called this out per request of the major. Major, if you could identify yourself and please identify what you would like to have done.
Major Andy Sullivan for the Police Department. Our original requested spending authority was $10,000 for this particular bid. I'm requesting that the spending authority be increased to $13,000 due to one unforeseen aspect of it during this bid year.
Could you repeat that last sentence on one what, please? I'm sorry.
So, so there's a part of the accreditation this year. We get reaccredited every four years. On the fourth year, prior to reaccreditation being approved or denied, we do have an onsite visit from one of the clear representatives, and that will occur in this bid year. So that had not been included originally in the bid amount.
Thank you so much, Major. So we're going to have a discussion. Another request is to amend the bid. May I have a PCR? PCR 41-23. And is there any discussion on the amendment? From the committee? From the council? From the public? Amen, discussion on the amendment of bid 2024-014, now PCR 41-23. Thank you. May I have a motion?
Move to amend as mentioned.
Second.
So move to amend the amount of authorization from $10,000 to $13,000. I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor? Aye. May I have a motion as amended?
Move favorable action?
Second.
I have a motion as amended on PCR 41-23 and a second. May, all those in favor? Aye. Oh, I apologize. That's true. Thank you. So I'll, I'll repeat that last "as amended" part. Were there any questions from the committee as amended? Any questions from the council as amended? Any questions from members of the public as amended? Thank you. I'm just, for record-keeping, I'm going to ask, is, may I have a motion as amended?
Move favorable action as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The final item on the bid package for discussion is bid 2023-414, use of govdeals.com for the sale of surplus obsolete unused materials and junk property. This was requested by the council president. Before I refer to the council president, Director, if you wouldn't mind identifying yourself, your department and title.
Frances Gomez, Purchasing Director.
Thank you so much. Council President McAllister.
Thank you. Good evening, Director.
Good evening.
I mean, I know me and you have discussed this before, but I just wanted to have you let everyone know what's going on. This is a revenue item, which we love revenue items, but if you could just explain what we're working on here.
All right, so the city of Warwick has, I would say, a couple of yards of junk property and obsolete items. The Police Department as well has some vehicles that are no longer in use. And when it comes to the vehicles, we are still paying insurance premium annually on an inactive vehicle. Usual practice is to go out to bid for the highest bidder, but that can take two weeks and only for a limited time versus govdeals.com is a free service, reaches nationwide, even other countries, if that. And they provide a free full service to the city without any cost, no contract needed. It's equivalent to an eBay, but we're more in control, there's more transparency when it comes to being a public sector.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to go to questions from the committee. Councilman Foley.
Thank you. I was always wondering why the city had never made use of this. As some people know, I have a hobby of buying and reselling, and I, I regularly check munici bids, which is a sister or competitor to the one you're mentioning. And some of the items that they put on there are amazing, and you can get good use out of them. So thank you for doing this and moving this forward.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the committee? Questions from members of the council? Questions on bid 2023-414 from members of the council? Questions, comments from the public? Questions, comments from the public on 2023-414? Thank you. May I have a full motion, may I have a motion on a full consent calendar vote?
Move favorable action?
Second.
I have a motion for favorable. I have a motion for second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Item PCR 38-23, resolution relative to abatements. Good evening, Mr. Dupuy.
Neil Dupuy, Director of Assessing. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, members of the council. This month, we have abatements for you in the amount of $1,256.16. There's only three total abatements. One was a registry error where the registration was canceled, but because it was during COVID, it didn't get processed properly. One was a clerical error on our part, which was basically their property was frozen, but it didn't get processed this year, so we corrected that as well. Any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I do want to identify, Director, that I remember there was a time some years ago when members of this council, we would see large amounts of abatements, and we would often scratch our heads, and we've noticed there's been a consistency of abatements that are addressing the earned senior citizen discounts and veteran, veteran homestead exemptions, if you will, and the senior citizens' home site exemptions. That has been what we've been witnessing and seeing, and it's been, obviously, the system's been cleaned up, and I thank you so much for that. Other further questions, comments from members of this committee?
Questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Questions, comments from members of the public? May I have a motion?
Move favorable action?
Second.
All, we have a motion. I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. And just for the record, I'd like to identify that PCR 24-23, formerly bid 2023-088, I received a request from the administration to hold. The committee agreed to hold this item until April 17th. The time is now 5:22 PM, and the Finance Committee is closed.
Ordnance Committee, but that cannot start until 6 PM, so we will see you at 6 PM.
We need Councilman Ricks and Councilman McElroy. Ordnance Committee will convene at 6:02 PM. First, we have acceptance of minutes from the March 20th, 2023 meeting. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action?
So Councilman Ricks and I weren't there. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Epstein.
Epstein.
Aye.
Next, we have PCO 18-22, an ordinance penalizing owners or leases of vehicles using, used to carry materials to a place at which they are illegally dumped. This is Councilman Howe and Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to refer to the solicitor for amendments that were provided to us as we sought advice from the chief as well as the municipal judge. Solicitor?
Thank you, Councilman. We have a recommendation for some amendment language. It's mostly rewriting kind of the order of it, but it does add a piece at the end. So my recommendation would be to entertain it as a replacement amendment that I can read into the record as follows. The new language of subsection B would read as follows. "It shall be unlawful for any vehicle, either owned or leased, to be used to carry materials to a place at which they are illegally dumped. Except for owners of title of leased vehicles and owners of vehicles that are reported stolen prior to being used for illegal dumping, the owner of title or lessor of record of any vehicle used for unlawful dumping activities shall be jointly and individually liable with the operator for the payment of any fines imposed unless the owner or lessor of the vehicle has prima facie proof that the vehicle was used for unlawful dumping by another person who is not an agent or employee of the owner or the lessor. Photographs or videos of the vehicle being used in unlawful dumping activities may be used as evidence before the municipal court in prosecuting such offense and imposing any fine on the vehicle owner or lessor. Any municipal court citation for an illegal dumping violation shall be deemed admitted and defaulted after two notices unanswered by the titled owner or lessor of record." That completes the recommended streamlining of the proposed language.
Thank you, Solicitor and Chairman. As Councilman Lattiser, as my co-sponsor, speaking for myself, I would respectfully request favorable action as amended. Thank you.
Would be proper to first move the proposed amended language?
Committee's pleasure.
All right, so I'd move to have the proposed amended language adopted.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments from the committee regarding the proposed amended language? Is there any questions or comments from the council regarding the proposed amended language? Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Chairman. Mainly a statement, I'd like to thank Colonel Connor, as well as Judge McElroy and our own counsel solicitor for their work on helping us kind of rearrange some of the language. It's, it's always a lot easier when the enforcing bodies are on the same page as, as we are when we pass these things. So that, that assistance from them was very helpful. I think Councilwoman Travis wanted to be added as a co-sponsor on this as well. Is that good with you? Councilman Howe?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, members of the council? Councilman Ricks?
A question for the city council solicitor.
A question for the city council solicitor. As to the language of jointly and individually, this would all be in reference to a fine of a maximum of $500, such that either or both of the offenders could be subjected to that $500 fine?
Normally, it would be the 500. However, there is a Rhode Island general law that says not to exceed $600 as the imposition of penalty for illegal dumping in the city of Warwick. So, there's an additional discretion, but it's up to the judge.
Oh, very good. Yeah, I had a thought for a minute there of usually when I see the joint language, that also goes hand in hand with joint and separately, but because this is a matter of a fine as opposed to a matter of an undetermined amount for restitution or anything of that nature, since we are in the realm of fines as opposed to some other sort of civil suit, I don't think that several language, joint and several language would actually be needed. I think that jointly and individually would work. So, I don't have any amendment on that point. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none, do we have, I guess, all in favor of the amended language?
Aye.
Aye. So, now, the bill as amended is before us. Any questions or comments from members of the committee regarding the bill as amended? Any questions or comments from members of the council for the bill as amended? Any questions or comments from the public for the bill as amended? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have PCO 9-23, an ordinance to prohibit parking on the west side of Lauren Court on school days between 8:30 AM and 9:30 AM and between 2:30 PM and 3:30 PM. This is Councilman Lattiser. It would be first passage.
Also, Chairman?
Yep.
Thank you. So, the issue here is accompanied by actually a very substantial and detailed police report from Sergeant K., who I would like to thank as well as Officer Issuewood for a very detailed traffic study with this. I won't go through the entire documents, but I do want to say this has been a problem that has been existing on the south side of Rocky Point Avenue as it relates to Warwick next school. The situation has become more apparent and actually more dangerous over the years because we constantly have a flow of traffic where parents, grandparents, friends are dropping these youngsters off at that south side of Warwick next school. And it's bad enough when there's no snow on the ground. It's compounded several times over when there is snow on the ground. The property adjacent to the north side of the street, the city property, but yet it's not maintained in the sense that the residents have planted gardens. There's stumps over there. There's walls that have been placed over there. And the police department in their recommendations have reflected that. In addition to that, they're parking on both sides of the street, even though I had signs put up there several years ago that only allowed parking on one side of the street and no parking during the hours that are indicated. The pictures that I've taken over there between quarter past eight and quarter past nine in the morning as well as later on in the afternoon show, in some occasions, traffic coming from three different directions, if you will, or three abreast, up and down Rocky Point Avenue. Youngsters with their guardians or parents or friends, walking sometimes on the side of the street, sometimes in the street, getting these youngsters to school. We have problems with Lauren Court, which is directly across the street from the entrance to that school, where people are parking on both sides of the street, pretty much making it impossible for an emergency vehicle to respond to those residents that live on Lauren Court should something like that occur. Vehicles parking partly on Lauren Court and partly sticking out on Rocky Point Avenue. So, this thing is just a big mess and it's a significant problem and a very unfortunate accident just waiting to happen. Officer, I should say Sergeant K. has done a great job in his assessment of this problem and has been communicating with me right along as well as with Deputy Superintendent Bill McCaffrey as well as Principal Galligan, the crossing guards. There's been a lot of communication on this and a lot of interaction with this in order to try and get this problem created. This will be the beginning of taking some corrective actions to protect the children as well as whoever's bringing those youngsters to school as best we can at this time. There'll be follow-up action that I'm going to be required to take with regards to getting sidewalk put in as recommended by the police department on the north side of that street. There's also some sign change, changes that we're going to have to make with DPW. And in long term, we are going to continue with discussions to actually have a new traffic pattern established in the back of that school. So, that's the detail of it. We're talking about young children here who, as you know, sometimes get out of a car and they just tend to want to keep moving. And when they're opening that door on the inside of the road and there's cars coming down in different directions, that is very concerning and very alarming. So, with that said, I would respectfully request favorable action on this issue right here regarding the recommendations of the police department that you have in your packet. Thank you.
Do any members of the committee have any questions or comments? Do any members of the council have any questions or comments? Do any members of the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is PCO 10-23, an ordinance to prohibit parking on the south side of Castle Rocks Road between 133 and 179 Castle Rocks Road. This is Councilman Gebhardt and it would be first passage. Councilman Gebhardt?
Thank you. I'm over here. Hello. Respectfully ask for favorable action. This is supported by a traffic study. This is a, there's a small island on a narrow stretch of the road that sort of divides two sides of the road. It's being utilized by a few of the residents to park cars and especially around this bend. When cars are parked there, there's no visibility and there would not be sufficient room for an emergency vehicle to pass by. So, looking to put, make that a no parking area. Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Any questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That concludes ordinance at 6:17 PM.
The next committee to me is the Public Safety Committee and that can start at this time.
Good evening. The Public Safety Committee meeting starts at 6:17. The first item of business, acceptance of minutes from the committee meeting held on March 6th. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is PCR 39-23, resolution relative to claims. First item is acceptance of minutes for this, that committee meeting on March 6, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First claim is PCR 39-23. Number one, Robert Bolton hitting a pothole. And the recommendation is to approve in the amount of $300, which is the limit. Any questions or comments from the committee? Councilman Ricks?
I noticed that there aren't the usual three invoices or estimates as we would normally expect. However, this is a situation where the claimant had a total claim of $12,902.96. We did receive that invoice and his auto insurance company did pay out on that claim a total of $11,902.96 with a $1,000 deductible. Since this is a circumstance where there was that amount of damage as well as there was an insurance company involved here that's really doing the due diligence for us, I don't see a need to have that same person who already submitted and approved, received approval from his auto insurance company on this claim to then go and have to get estimates from two other automobile repair shops. We're limited to a $300 maximum here under state law. So, I would be comfortable after we finish with the comments from other members of the committee, council, and the public. At this time, I would feel comfortable with approval as recommended by the department in the amount of $300.
Thank you. Any other members of the committee? Members of the council? Members of the public? Members of the public. Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve in the amount of $300.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second claim is Holly Brodeur, damage from a city sanitation vehicle. The recommendation is to approve in the amount of $279.99, which is the low bid to replace said basketball hoop. Any questions from the committee? Councilman Ricks?
I would just briefly point out for members of the public that if one has a basketball hoop in the street and it gets hit by a city sanitation truck, that's not on the truck. That's on the person who put it in the street because these basketball hoops aren't supposed to be in the street. However, this is a situation where the department is familiar with, with that protocol and those regulations. We've seen these come in front of the city council with a recommendation to deny. This came with a recommendation to approve. It seems that the basketball hoop was in a proper location when it was hit by the truck. So, based on that, I would be comfortable with following the department's recommendation after, of course, the appropriate comments.
Thank you. Any comments from the committee? From the council? Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To expand on Councilman Ricks's comments, that ordinance that we have is actually section 70-14 and it speaks to this quite clearly. And this isn't the first time that we've had these issues come up with the basketball hoops being damaged by our sanitation vehicles. And it's happened numerous times. And I've objected to paying the claim numerous times as I'm going to again because I think it's unreasonable to hold the drivers of those sanitation vehicles feet to the fire with regard to these basketball hoops, assemblies, whatever you want to call them, sometimes right in the road, sometimes extending over the road. But yet, everyone expects them to do their job and get the rubbish and the recycling picked up. So, if you want to keep paying for this and you want to keep approving it, which flies in the face of the ordinance, then let's just change the ordinance so we don't have to go through this every time this issue comes up. Change the ordinance, allow it to occur, and be done with it. Other than that, there was a reason why this was put in place and to just continually ignore it and approve these claims doesn't make any sense to me. So, I would object to paying this claim for those reasons and also expecting our DPW drivers to do whatever type of reconnaissance they need to do to circumvent these hoops or damaging them. If you want to keep paying for it, dock it in an ordinance and change it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve in the amount of $279.99. And I'll just say very briefly that there is no evidence that was presented in the packet that this particular basketball hoop was in the street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The last claim is for Frank Patte, and it is hitting a pothole on Malburn Street. The recommendation is to approve in the amount of $300. Committee, Councilman Ricks?
Thank you. Reviewing this claim, all seems to be in order with the three or more estimates. Damage exceeds that amount and I think that anyone who travels on that road is very familiar with the potholes. Thank you.
Thank you. Other committee? Counsel? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve in the amount of $300.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright, the next item is PCR 31-23, a claim that was held over, had been denied or recommended to be denied. Is there anyone from the committee to speak on this claim? Anyone from the council? Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this claim? Anyone from the public? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move to deny unfavorable action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is PCR 31-23, a resolution regards to authorizing and repositioning the stop sign on Glencoe Road where it intersects with Wath Road. For action, Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, the police department has done a very good job in doing that traffic study at my request. There is an issue there where the property owner at the intersection of Glencoe and Wath Road has allowed their strawberries to become massive, far exceeding the regulations in the building code and also significantly obstructing the view as your in the building code, and also significantly obstructing the view as you're pulling out onto Woff Road. And during the season, there's a significant amount of traffic that's coming out of the Woff Marina, heading west on Woff Road. And I, again, yesterday, went to that particular location. The shrubberies have not been trimmed as of yet, and I can understand that the reasoning is probably because they're waiting for them to bloom, not the best time to trim, et cetera, et cetera. The property owner was very cooperative with the police officer and has agreed to trim them back, possibly may even need to be moved back because they may be on city property. But in any event, the request is to take that sign, move it forward so that it's closer to Woff Road, have the property owner trim those shrubberies back to hopefully make clear visibility as people are coming down from Woff Road. Having said that, I would request favorable action. Thank you.
Any comments from the committee? Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. PCR 36-23, a resolution regards to erecting a stop sign on Charlotte Drive where it intersects with Sawyer Avenue. For action, Councilman Gebhardt.
This is an example of one of the things that used to happen back in the day where stop signs would get erected without a partner ordinance. So this one was taken down about a, maybe it's a couple of years back. It's been the request of the neighborhood to have the stop sign put back up. This is a stretch of road that follows a long straightaway, and it dead-ends into a cross street. And if you were to go right on the cross street, it's where there's a small neighborhood beach, and there's often pedestrians coming up from the beach and kids and wagons and all of the above. So we've done a traffic study. There is a little bit of work to be done in order to put the stop sign up, similar to Councilman Lattiser's last item. On the corner, there's a significant amount of overgrowth from the property on the corner. So we may need to either have the property owner trim that back or have DPW do some trimming, you know, up to the extent of the city property. But either way, appreciate your support, and this is an important one for public safety. Thank you.
Any other comment? Any comments from the committee? Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee ends at 6:31.
The next committee to meet is the Intergovernmental Committee, and that can start at this time.
The first order of business is the acceptance of minutes from committee meeting held on March 6, 2023. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
The first item on the agenda is PCR-35-23, a resolution requesting the General Assembly to amend Rhode Island General Law Section 44-5-67.2 regarding property tax classification for the City of Warwick to reduce the minimum ratio of Class 1 to Class 2 rates. Council President McAllister?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the tax assessor here and the mayor's department here to speak on behalf of this. Thank you.
Good evening. Neil Dupuy, Director of Assessing. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, members of the council, members of the public. The intent of this legislation is to provide the city with the flexibility to maintain the existing tax levy classes, right? So right now, we tax each class based on state-enabling legislation, which is one-size-fits-all. It wasn't necessarily designed for a city like Warwick. It was designed by the state so that when communities went through revaluation, they had some options to classify their tax rates if there was a burden shift. But that one-size-fits-all includes communities like Foster with very little commercial property to speak of, and Warwick, which clearly we have a very large commercial base. I need to stress from the beginning that we are not looking to increase the taxes on any commercial property owner. We're not looking to increase the amount of, the percentage of the levy that comes from the commercial class, simply to maintain the revenue by each class so that there is no forced burden shift based on the classification that we use. So over the last year, since we delayed the revaluation last time because of the unstable market, I've been studying the different options, looking at different proposals, other statutory approvals that other communities have. And what we see is that Warwick already had a statute on the books at the state level that was approved several years ago before the state put in the enabling legislation. We had legislation that was more specifically designed towards Warwick. One of the big differences with that is there was no restriction on the tangible personal property tax rate. Now, again, we're not looking to increase the taxes on any class or any specific property owner, but in the last revale, Narragansett Electric, not to pick on them specifically, they just happen to be one of the largest tangible personal property taxpayers, got about a $750,000 reduction in their tax bill that was solely related to the fact that one class of our property rates is tied to another. In other words, our tangible personal property rate can be no more than twice the amount of our residential rate. So just pure mathematics forced us to give some property owners a reduction that they weren't asking for. There were no appeals from National Grid. They weren't asking for a reduction, but based on our structure, we had to give them one, right? So that's an example of what happens based on the shifts with our current system. Same thing happened on the commercial property end where car dealerships, other commercial entities that are very high-income earners had a built-in reduction to their tax bill that they weren't asking for, they weren't looking for. One of the most important things, I understand, I've been doing this for 35 years, from business owners, talking to them in tax appeal matters and just conversations over the years, is that they want stable, predictable tax amounts without the volatility of up and down, right? So they're looking for stability, not necessarily reductions. But our structure that we currently have forces us into that, and that's not really what we're looking to do. So looking at other communities, some have very little restrictions at all, okay? In the case of Providence, they can have a tax rate on the commercial side that's more than double the residential rate. We're not looking to go that far. We're not looking to be Providence. But again, it helps us to avoid a shift by having a little more flexibility in our tax structure. This proposal here in front of you tonight doesn't actually do anything with the tax rates. It's just giving the budget board and the committee and the council the option to have a little flexibility when they decide what to do with the shifts and what to do with the rates when we get to that point. So not to go on and on with math and different figures that might gloss over the issue, I'll answer any questions that the committee, the council, or the public has. I think that will flush out most of the issues. Thank you.
Any questions from the committee? Questions or comments from the council? Councilman Ricks?
Director, thank you for coming this evening. When was the last time that Warwick had a tax revaluation?
As of December 31, 2018.
And things have changed quite a lot in the valuation since that time, right?
Absolutely.
Generally speaking, how has the residential been affected compared to the commercial valuations?
Well, one of the reasons why we delayed the revale that was due for last year, 12/31 of '21, was the impact of COVID, right? So there were two different dynamics that really had an impact on the residential homeowners and the market overall. The first was supply, right? There was an issue where people didn't feel comfortable going out, they didn't want to make any moves, so fewer properties went on the market. Today, I think we had 65 homes for sale in Warwick. It's normally 250, 300 homes in a stable, typical market. But the other thing was that the demand also rose because of the remote workforce and the work at home that most businesses switched to in the pandemic. The demand rose because now all of a sudden, it didn't seem so far if you had to commute to Boston maybe only once or twice a month, or some people even going to New York or to Hartford. So the demand increased while the supply was low and that the house prices shot way up as a result. We're starting to see some more stability with the Fed raising the interest rates the way they have. That's definitely having an impact. Unfortunately, I think one of the next results might be foreclosures because in a lot of cases, people can't qualify for the same home that they bought just based on the interest rates.
And perhaps aside from the run-up to the last peak around 2006, 2007, aside from that, in living memory, it's the last three, four years on residential home valuations, it's pretty much unprecedented, aside from that one example, right?
Yeah, the 2008 market was the last time we had a crash, and the parallel at that point was the gas prices. So we had gas prices right around $4 per gallon, and we went over that. We've now thankfully come back down a little bit, but with the volatility that's going on in the world, I don't have a crystal ball, but I think that's definitely a factor that has to be watched closely.
And so we're seeing a lot of home prices, residential home prices. Certainly, it's going to differ from one price range to another, but oftentimes, we're seeing home prices in just these last four years raising by, say, 30, 40% or more?
Absolutely. Although I want to stress that a percentage of change isn't something we look at either from an assessment or an appraisal standpoint. It's not.
Of course. The last assessment around has no bearing on the current assessment, but there is that massive swing that would, in terms of revale, cause a lot of instability on the residential side. And then it's my understanding that because of the commercial rates are based on the residential rates, but the commercial market has been quite different from the residential market the last four years, right?
Correct. You know, there's definitely been some increases, but it's more property-specific, property-use-specific, I should say. But again, a lot of it was related to the pandemic and not necessarily sustainable. So again, with that same remote workforce, there's going to be an issue down the road with leases on commercial office buildings when those come up for renewal, possibly not needing as much space, but the companies are trying to bring the workforce back, and who knows what the future brings. Other uses such as self-storage benefited because if people, you know, couldn't afford to buy a home, they had to store their goods somewhere, so those types of uses went up as well. So it's not a flat across the board, it's more of an up and down.
And the valuations that are done as part of the revale, it's not looking at, excuse me, it is looking at assessing those particular properties based on their current assessment, but when we're setting the tax rate, that's not something where we're picking and choosing the tax rate that's applied to any individual property. If it's a commercial property, it gets the commercial rate. If it's a residential property, it's the residential rate, and this resolution would do nothing to change that.
Correct. It's by class, it's not for a specific property. Everybody in that class will get that same rate.
Yeah. And so the purpose of all of this is to give the city some flexibility so that as we're seeing both locally as well as part of these larger national trends, this massive instability, matter of giving us some tools to try to smooth things out so that one class, the entire commercial class, doesn't tend to see a massive tax cut while the, although they still may, some may still see a tax cut, but because the tax revaluation is revenue-neutral to the city, there would be a certain amount of instability and issues caused if that massive tax cut on a commercial side ends up having that effect of a massive tax hike on the residential side, if that would be fair to say.
Yeah, there's always shifts with the evaluations, and that's one of the reasons why when the state changed from a 10-year revale cycle to a three-year revale cycle in the late '90s, that we started to see more and more tax classification systems put into play because it just naturally forces a shift. The tangible personal property is based on the cost of the item, not the market value. So when you combine that non-market system with the revale, which is based on market, it's just not a good recipe.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to really look into this, do your homework, looking at the comparison with the powers that, say, Massachusetts cities and towns have for those comparable examples, and trying to find a solution that gives us some tools to strike a balance in these, I think it's fair to say, very turbulent times when it comes to the real estate market, both commercial and residential. Thank you.
And that's exactly what it is, is balance, right? Because there's going to be ups and downs every revale, there's going to be winners and losers every revale, but by class of property, we want to try to mitigate that shift, equalize those revenues. Like you mentioned with Massachusetts, every community in Massachusetts has the capability of going up 1.75 times on their commercial rate versus their residential rate. If we look at Massachusetts as a model, they're certainly not suffering economically, you know, they're the model that we try to achieve. So it's not trying to get every tax dollar, it's trying to get that balance. And we look at both, you know, the neighbor to the north and also, you know, our local competitors with Cranston and West Warwick. We are sitting right where we want to be. We're competitive, we're not giving away the store, and we're not the highest tax rate, so.
Questions or comments from the council? Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair to the council president. Mr. President, you may or may not be aware of the fact that I had submitted a series of questions, 14 questions to be exact, to the administration for answers. And they were very forthcoming with those answers. They provided me with those answers actually the next day. I had also requested through the council solicitor to disseminate those questions and answers to my colleagues on the city council so that those answers would be, the questions would be known and the answers would be known prior to having this hearing. The city council solicitor advised me not to do that because of the Open Meetings Act, which is fine, and I respect that. His job is to protect us as best he can from making errors. Having said that, I would like to have your permission, seeing as none of my colleagues know the questions nor the answers I received, nor probably the majority of the public know what these are, I would like your permission to read these into the record, the questions and... and the answers, and not impair upon my 10 minutes to speak towards this item. Keeping in mind, this is really the only significant thing we have on the calendar this evening. The rest of it is going to go pretty good. I would request your permission to do that.
Well, Councilman, this is in Intergovernmental Committee, so it should go through the chair. The chair can make that decision on that for my two cents. First of all, thank you for asking those questions in advance. I think it gave the administration an opportunity to review it. I saw that you posted it publicly on your social media as well, which I think is important. The only concern I have is, you know, we do have council rules on the time, and I don't know if this is just a way to double-dip on the time, so...
But no, excuse me, Mr. President. I'm not looking to double-dip. I'm requesting permission to share the information that I requested from the administration. They very quickly replied and responded to that information. I'm requesting permission to disseminate that information to the members of the city council so that you all can be privy to the answers that I received to those questions. I'm not looking to double-dip. I'm looking to still have my 10 minutes absolutely for my comments. I'm simply looking to enter into the record the questions that I asked from the administration they graciously responded to and that my colleagues on the city council are not aware of.
No, I understand your position, but you're asking and answering questions, and then you want additional time to ask more questions? I feel that's just trying to get around...
No, 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 Mr. President, no. Don't twist what I'm saying. I am requesting permission to disseminate the questions I asked to the administration. I'm not asking new questions. I'm simply reading into the record for the benefit of my colleagues on the city council so you can be well-informed or as best informed as I can help you to be with the questions I asked. I'm not asking the administration to respond again. I'm asking to read the questions into the record. I'm asking to read the answers I got to those questions into the record. And with all due respect, in the time that we just went back and forth on this, I could have had this all done and read.
Councilman Latteser.
Councilman, we can certainly accept the document and insert it into the record, make it available for anyone who wants to inspect it. I would respectfully suggest that, given you have the time and opportunity with the, I believe, the director who answered these questions, maybe trying to work through them quickly, as expeditiously as possible in summary, that might be a better use of the time at the moment. But we can certainly include that item, the document, as part of the record for...
Including the document as part of the record does not speak to what the document contains. It doesn't educate the members of the public to what the document contains. Whether anyone agrees with the answers or not, whether I agree with the answers or not, is not what we're discussing right now. What we're discussing is to provide as much information as we can to the elected body that's sitting here this evening that is going to be potentially voting on this matter. Now, are you suggesting that we just take a copy? Are you suggesting perhaps we take a 15-minute recess, make copies of all of this, disseminate it to everyone on the council, let them read it first, and then we can come back to it again?
Respectfully, Councilman, I actually concurred with your prior comment that we should get right into the merits of what you're discussing and use the time appropriately.
So then you are agreeing that I should be able to read these questions and answers into the record?
You have the floor at the moment.
I'm sorry?
You have the floor.
Okay. Not impairing on my 10 minutes after. Oh, so there you go. So you're going to say it's either one or the other. I can either share this information with the members of the elected body or... Or I get to use my 10 minutes.
Council, I believe the chair has acknowledged you. If you would like to ask any questions, now is your time.
Through the chair. I didn't mean any disrespect, Mr. Chair. I just assumed that it would be deferred to the council president. I didn't mean any disrespect. So I'll leave it in your lap.
Okay. Councilman, what is your pleasure?
I would like to read the questions I asked and the answers that I received from the administration into the record so all of my colleagues and a member of the public will be privy to what that is. Then my 10 minutes start from that point.
Okay, now you stated that you would have been all done talking about this before. So how long will it take you to read these comments?
These right here? I would say it's going to be less than 10 minutes.
The questions and answers?
The question and answers. I would say it's going to be less than 10 minutes. You can time me if you'd like, but I think this is very... Mr. Chairman, I think this is very important because these answers were provided in good faith from the administration. Again, I'm not stating whether I agree with those answers or disagree. I just think it's important that everyone is aware of it. Yes.
Read the report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Question number one. Please provide a narrative from the administration of why this legislation is being proposed. Answer: This legislation will allow the city to maintain existing tax levy amounts currently being generated from each class of property, parentheses, residential, commercial, tangible, personal property. The state-enabling statute that we currently utilize is a one-size-fits-all approach that could result in tax burden shifts between the different classes of property. The existing statute that we are using lump sums rural towns like Foster with very little commercial property into the same system as the city of Warwick and our large commercial tax base. In a small community, there is very little burden shift because the majority of the properties are in the same class. More urban municipalities will see significant shifts in the tax burden between the classes of property and should have a different mechanism to deal with these burden shifts that occur each revaluation. After delaying the revaluation last year, we took the opportunity to review and develop a tax classification system that was designed specifically for the city of Warwick. The end result was to go back to a Warwick statute that was already on the books, but not but to modernize the percentages. The statute was submitted to the General Assembly by a former Warwick city council that saw the need for Warwick's specific tax classification plan. Question two. Please provide a narrative from the administration of the consequences of this legislation if it is not being passed by the city council. Answer: We will cross the bridge if and when that time occurs. We would like your support in approving this resolution. We would support your approving this resolution, which could avoid unnecessarily shifting the tax burden onto your constituents if passed. Please provide any analysis the administration has performed showing the benefits of this legislation. Please answer. Please refer the other responses herein. Question four. Please provide any analysis the administration has performed showing the impact on existing small business owners in Warwick. Answer: Because we are not looking to increase the tax levy for any class of property, there will be little and to no impact on the small business community. Some small business owners are actually still likely to see a reduction in their tax bills with this tax classification system. Five. Please provide an analysis the administration has performed showing the impact of new small business development in the city. Warwick is and will continue to be an attractive place to do business, both large and small, due to our excellent highway location, the airport, train station, and other factors. We only need to look at the north at the state of Massachusetts to see that there will be no reduction in commercial development as a result of the change. All of the 351 communities in Massachusetts have the ability to set their commercial tax rate at 1.75% times the residential tax rate. Most of the larger cities and several smaller ones are using that rate differential and have been for decades. Massachusetts continues to have a robust and commercial industrial base with its same tax rate policy. Mathematically, our Class 1 rate being no less than 57% of our Class 2 rate is the same as saying the Class 2 rate can be up to 1.75 times the Class 1 rate. Question six. Has the administration studied similar proposals made in other communities and the impact the legislation has had in small businesses? If not, why not? Yes, there are many communities... Answer: Yes, there are many communities that have enacted tax classification systems that are specifically designed for their unique location and tax base. One such example is Providence, which has very little restriction on how the tax rate is set for each class. However, just like the smaller town example above, not all large cities have the same issues to consider. Providence has many more non-owner-occupied properties and a much higher existing commercial tax rate. These factors necessitate a plan specific to their land uses and tax policy goals. The higher commercial tax rate in Providence versus Warwick is another example of this proposal will not be unduly burdened on our commercial tax base. Seven. Has the administration reached out to the Chamber of Commerce with Island Builders Association and other business associations, seeking their opinion on this legislation? If not, why not? Answer: We are well aware of the impact of tax policy on the growth of a community and have fully factored that into our analysis. But again, we are not seeking to increase the commercial tax levy simply to maintain the existing revenue from each class. Eight. Has the Warwick Economic Development Department prepared an opinion on the merits of this legislation? If not, why not? Bruce Kaiser, Director of Economic Development, has been involved in the process of making this decision. You can reach out to him directly for any additional comments that he may have. Nine. Please provide the total number of commercial businesses in Warwick. There are roughly 3,500 taxable businesses and approximately 3,100 Class 2 real estate parcels. Question 10. Please provide the number of new commercial properties opened and closed in Warwick in the last 12 months. We do not currently have that information. The bulk of the calendar year 2022 business forms just came in in the last few weeks. They weren't due until March 15th. So we are in the process of going through approximately 3,500 accounts, but we have identified approximately 200 potential new business accounts from our field sites visited, conducted at the end of the year. Eleven. Please provide the total number of commercial properties exempt from property taxes. There are approximately 2,300 tax-exempt real estate parcels. However, not all would be considered commercial in nature. Twelve. Please provide the total number of commercial properties assessed. A, under 1 million, approximately 2,600. B, 1 million or less than 5 million, approximately 350. 5 million and less than 10 million, approximately 75. 10 million and over, approximately 35. Question 13. Please provide an analysis of what the change in the current $18.73 residential, $28.10 commercial, and $37.46 tangible rate will be if this legislation is enacted. Answer: Too time to tell. That information will be estimated and submitted to the council during the upcoming budget hearing. Last question, 14. Please provide a breakdown of the actual tax dollars that would be realized if this legislation were enacted based on the current fiscal 2023 taxes. For example, a residential tax dollars is set at 1,138,123,500. Provide the change in those dollars and the new tax total that would be set. The answer is, again, too soon for that type of data, but no increase in commercial levy is being suggested. Approving this proposal will only allow the city options in setting the tax rates. By itself, it doesn't change anything. However, if enacted, first, the city will not have the opportunity to address... If not enacted, the city will not have the opportunity to address any burden shifts when the final data is available. No changes ever proposed to the way the city passes our annual budget or sets the tax rates. These issues would be more appropriate when we get to budget hearings. The proposal just gives the city more options. It doesn't set the tax rates in any way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your due diligence in allowing me to read those questions and answers into the record. Now, if I may, continue?
Councilman, you have two minutes.
We're going to pause right now to start the regular council meetings.
Thank you.
So at this time, the city council is going to pause the Intergovernmental Committee. We will start the full city council meeting. We will do a few items, and then we will come right back into the Intergovernmental Committee. Thank you.
Postline. For the humans, the wildlife, and the aquatic life, which we all consider Potawatomi, are our home. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Thank you so much to everyone who came out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and it's great to see you, and safe travels all the way back to Potawatomi. At this time, we're on general communications. This is the announcement of congratulations, condolences, or community events. I have one. The Easter Hunt the city of Warwick is hosting is this Saturday. It's at City Park. It's partnering with the Tri-City Elks. Registration starts at 11:30, and the hunt starts at 12:30. So make sure you're there by 12:30. Are there any other general communications for members of the council at this time? Councilman Howe.
I'll defer to you, please.
Councilman Rix.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brief announcement that the Tax Relief Commission is going to intend to hold a meeting this month ahead of the budget hearings and adoption of the budget, and I do intend to docket a resolution at the council this evening so that the recommendations of the Tax Relief Commission may be heard prior to the budget hearings. Thank you. Thank you. Any other members? Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to request a moment of silence due to, on the evening of Wednesday, March 29th, two Black Hawk Killator copters collided during a training mission, killing nine members of our United States military of the 101st Airborne Division. They trill to real-world situations. The training is hard, fast-paced, and dangerous. Mr. President, to the fellow citizens of Warwick, I respectfully request a moment of silence for the nine members of the 101st Airborne Division.
Thank you, Councilman. We will have a moment of silence at this time. Thank you. Anything else under general communications for members of the council? Okay, we'll move on to executive communications. There are none. A is the acceptance of the minutes for the council meeting held on March 20th. Councilman Howe?
More favorable action.
Second, by Councilman Gephardt, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any assumptions?
Abstain.
Two abstain, Councilman Sinapi and Councilman Rix. Okay. At this time, I ask that we pause the city council meeting and return to the Intergovernmental Committee. Thank you.
It is now 7:17, and the Intergovernmental Committee is back in session. Councilman Latteser, at this time, you will have your full 10 minutes. I would just ask if you could try to not be redundant and ask questions that you already asked and gave the answers to from the administration?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
First, I apologize, Councilman Latteser. To the solicitors, a point of clarification. Don't we need to do the vote in order to allow it?
If you want to entertain a motion to exempt the time that was reading it into the record, you can make that motion be seconded and voted upon, and that would get it around the rules.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that I, we take the testimony that Councilman Lattiser gave, and he will also get his full 10 minutes for questioning. I make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Although, in all fairness, normally it would be a nay, but it was stated to him that he'd have his time, so he should have it. In the future, that information should have simply been distributed because, frankly, that's what we've done before. I'm not sure why it worked differently this time, but we're here now, so.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councilman Sinapi. So, for the most part, I don't have any additional questions. I have a series of comments. I would first like to start off by thanking Director Dupree for his time and effort in working on this. One of the concerns I have, and you've heard me say this on many occasions, is not always particularly with the people who are sitting in government today, whether it be the council, Mr. Dupree, the administration, the mayor. I'm always concerned about the next group of people sitting in our seats or their seats who are making these changes. I'm very concerned with the flexibility that this allows. Not directing these comments particularly to this administration, but I am concerned about the flexibility it will given, it will allow for other administrations. We spoke about Providence. Well, I'm glad to hear you're not looking to do what Providence did because look where all this crazy tax stuff got them. Question I have for Director Dupree. So, we do two reevaluations, right? One is like, I'm going to use improper term perhaps, one's a structural, which is every 10 years, and one is a statistical, which is every three years?
Yes. State law requires we do a statistical update every three years and a full reevaluation every nine years. But they're essentially the same thing. It's just we're not independently verifying the property characteristics during a statistical.
And the reevaluation that we postponed last year, was that the 10-year one or the three-year one?
That was the three-year one.
The three-year one. When do we do for the 10-year one?
December 31st of 2024.
So hypothetically, if the administration were to look to hold this reevaluation that is scheduled to take place this year, does that mean in 2024, we're going to have the 10-year and the three-year in a double whammy all at one time?
No. So the revaluation that's going to go into effect for this next budget year, for this tax year that we're in, 2023, will be a two-year period rather than the typical three-year period. We'll actually need to start the full reevaluation early because it's a little bit longer than a full-year project. So we're technically in revow mode, but the numbers don't piggyback one off another. Each project is independent, and so we'll throw everything out that we had in our model from this revow that we're working on currently, and we'll analyze the 2024 market and build the models for that.
Okay, so I'm going to deviate from my norm. Normally, I just speak straight on, but I have made some notes because this is particularly concerning issue. So as I said, I'm very skeptical of this legislation. Business already pays a much higher rate for taxes. Not just for taxes, but businesses pay in the city of Warwick a higher rate for water, a higher rate for sewer. And now, we're looking to shift more of the tax burden onto businesses, commercial, industrial. I'm very skeptical because, as I said just a moment ago, we don't know, right now, we don't know when we're doing this revow. We have no idea what the revow is going to look like, and we have no idea how this is going to change the tax structure. And some of the answers I got in my questions supported that. If the city doesn't do the revow, I'll scratch that. You've already answered that question. I'm always concerned, and I don't particularly like uncertainties, and I get concerned when I don't have hard facts and figures that I can look at and I can focus on and I can digest. I get very concerned with that. You hear me meeting after meeting after meeting, challenging math problems, challenging numbers, challenging lack of numbers, et cetera. That gets me really concerned. I'm concerned with the uncertainty for the businesses and the residential taxpayers not knowing what they'll face in the, in future tax formulas. Businesses don't get services like trash removal, yard waste removal, recycling. Businesses don't send children to schools. I think this is a formula that is on the verge or potentially facing financial formula, I'm sorry, financial failure, because the formulas that we could conceivably be looking at could certainly put a very negative impact on the businesses in this community. All you got to do is look around the city. We have empty office spaces all over the place. We have empty stores. We have restaurants that are still struggling to recover from COVID. They got beat, and they got beat bad during COVID. And so did many other businesses. So did many other services. We have empty spaces in stores all over. And now we're looking to shift the tax burden and make it higher. This doesn't work for me.
Well, if I can address that, again, we're not looking to shift more taxes onto the commercial property owner. So the amount of the tax levy that comes in currently, if maintained, will not cause anybody's tax to go up that was directly related to this ordinance.
But Director, if, if you change, shift the burden, you take an extra 18% off residential and you move it on to commercial or industrial, at some point in time, it's going to have an impact, a financial impact. At some point in time, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to come home.
I would agree.
It may not come home the first time, but when the revows change and when these evaluations start to increase and you're adding an extra 18% onto the tax rates already, that's going to have a very negative impact.
Well, I'm not sure where the 18% comes from. We're not looking.
From 75 to 57.
Well, that's a no less than rate, but.
Right, no less.
Again, not to get into the mechanics of that. I think Warwick's unique because of the highway access, the airport, the train station, the quality of life. Many of the business owners that we're talking about also live in Warwick, and that's a dynamic that's different from most communities. So there's, there's two sides of that story.
Many of them don't. Many of the business owners don't. As a matter of fact, many of the people that work in the city don't live in the city. So let's kind of keep everything fair. So here's where I am with this. We just went through this in another venue about how we're going to, you know, benefit the taxpayers, and we're going to do this because it's going to save the taxpayers all kinds of money. If, if we are all so dedicated to keeping the money in the taxpayers' pocket, if we are so dedicated on controlling taxes and, better yet, reducing taxes, here's what my position is. Stop the spending. The spending is the problem. We, as elected officials, we need to have the courage to increase copays on health care. We need to raise the cap on prescription drugs. Please, I appreciate your participation, but if you could let me get through this. I don't want to get cracked off with my 10 minutes. We need to raise the cap on prescription drugs, eliminate free lifetime health care, and impose a reasonable copay on retirees. If we're serious about.
This is off track, Councilman.
This is, this is on the subject.
Councilman, this is not, not being debated this evening. Thank you.
You can put all the bandages you want.
Councilman, you have one minute.
On all of these issues, unless you're willing to tackle the tough fight and make those tough decisions and stop the bleeding, you can have whatever you want in terms of ability to shift taxes from one place to another place. It's not going to change because typically, if government lowers the tax, what you do is you spread out the base. You're not changing. It's not going to change. The only way to change it is stop the spending. That's going to change it. I am very reluctant on this. I'm very concerned with, not, again, with what this current administration may or may not do or what the City Council may or may not do. I'm really concerned, if this passes, what it's going to give in power to future council people and future administrations who I have no idea who could be sitting here, but it gives them, as we heard, exceptional amount of flexibility. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Dupree, I, I understand the councilman had a couple of questions, some statements. You were answering some, and then I understand the councilman was trying to remain within his time. Was there anything that you wanted to follow up with some of the statements or the questions that were made that you weren't able to finish?
Well, like we referenced earlier, balance is the key, right? So we're not looking to get too many tax dollars, but we're looking to get what is due. I have to say, there's a difference of opinion whether, you know, businesses send people to school, right? Because they need a qualified workforce, right? Which is based on our educational system. So it's a symbiotic relationship, and both sides benefit from that. Businesses also cost more for us to assess. There's a lot of work that goes into the assessment of commercial businesses and intangible personal property, much more difficult. We've got much less data than we do on residential property. So there's a cost on the other side, too. But again, we're looking to be competitive within the region. We feel that we are, even with the changes that we're looking to make. I can't see anybody locating if they were going to choose Warwick versus another community going elsewhere. Warwick's got everything they need. And when we look at Massachusetts as a guide, the 1.75 times hasn't diminished their market, their economy, and I think it's just the right balance for Warwick. It's not the same thing for some of the other communities.
The second follow-up I have is a statement you made at your opening statement, which was where you used National Grid as an example, or Rhode Island Energy now as an example. Could we also use box stores? And could you please define what example you gave as far as what their reduction in taxes were and why that became about, and how are they comparable to a small business that I may go to eat breakfast in or I may go and buy paint in? Could you please compare that?
Sure. So a lot of the big boxes are national chains, right? They're, they're working on a whole different scale than what we are here. Their tax burden, again, is something, again, based on my experience working with these types of owners over the decades that I've been doing this stuff, is their, their concern is in stability and known tax amounts, not reductions. They've already built that current tax bill into their equation and their profitability. So if we were to take that away, they'd be happy to get the reduction, but I'm not sure they're looking for it in a lot of cases. We reduce the appeals greatly from where they used to be, as we can see in the amendments. Now, some of that will come back because it's a revow year, so a whole bunch of new eyes are going to be looking at these things, and they'll, they'll file the appeals. But it's just a different economy than the small business, which has different market and force influences and different dynamic. But those are more based on local transactions, local sales, local rentals, whereas the big box stores are more based on regional income and expense profitability.
So they would actually, they would probably be happy if we didn't address any of this because their return would be.
Greater.
Much greater than, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Gephardt?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Director, for going through some of these, and thank you, Councilman Lattiser, for reading the, the questions and answers. So I just wanted to drill in a little bit more. So the, one of the questions I didn't see asked is, so the proposal is to, you know, move the, the ratio from 57 to 75%. How did you come up with the 75 as the threshold?
Well, again, mainly using Massachusetts as a guide. I've done real estate appraisals and revaluations in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Connecticut over my career. Massachusetts has one statewide policy. All the different municipalities have to follow what the Department of Revenue over there mandates. So it's just a more structured system, and when I look at the economy in Massachusetts, it's certainly not suffering from the policy that they have. The communities that are similarly set up with a good highway system, have a robust economy, which, you know, we hope to maintain in Warwick, but it's also looking at making sure we don't cross that threshold. So when I look at the regional tax rates of other communities, we're well positioned, if not lower, even with this change, than most of our competitive municipalities in Rhode Island for any new growth that might come up.
Thank you for that. And when we initiated the revow last year and then, and then didn't move forward, you know, do you, do you have some data that you've reviewed that leads you to feel strongly that you'll need this on a go-forward basis as a tool in your, in your toolkit, or?
Yeah, we don't have firm numbers yet because the decision was recently made to move forward and do the revow rather than seek an additional delay, but we're working on that. We're going to have those numbers shortly. They'll be well ahead of the budget hearings, and everybody will have a known at that point. But the residential market is red hot. There's still a very limited supply, and there's still a very strong demand. So the commercial market always tends to be more stable, even in non-COVID times. It's just been slow and steady growth versus the volatility that we see in the residential market. So again, it's just setting the table so that when the numbers are ready, because it's the legislative session at the state level, we can't wait. We have to make a decision on this, but I want to put that tool in the box when the budget is being heard. That's an option.
Okay. I mean, I share Councilman Lattiser's sensitivity around small businesses and, and, you know, the threat of, of higher taxes. We know that Rhode Island continually has one of the largest tax burdens on small businesses. So we certainly don't want to fall into any trap that would exacerbate that. I, you've said several times that this is more about maintaining what we have now despite shifting pools of value among the classes rather than any intent to raise, to raise any rates. So I just have a question about the timing. So you said it's important to get this out while the legislature is in session. Anything else involved in, in the timing of when you're requesting this? Any other factors?
Well, like I said, we're going to try to get the reevaluation notices out the very beginning of May, and that will have a process where property owners that feel like their property is over assessed can come forward and have meetings and discussions. We're going to try to modernize that practice to expedite it and do things through email and over phone versus in person. In person will still be an option, but we want to try to move things forward for the people that are ready to go. Other than that, we do have a meeting with the Department of Municipal Finance to discuss. There's a one-year option where, because this won't be approved by the time that the notice has to go in the paper about the tax rate change, we have to get them to be aware of that and word the notice appropriately.
Just another thing, like, we, we obviously had a strong turnout from the, from the business community tonight. Anytime there's something like this on the docket, it's going to get attention. Was there any thought put into maybe a pre-communication to assuage any, any fears or mitigate that? Or did you not find that appropriate?
Well, again, this is more of a table-setting matter. There's a set time. We couldn't submit bills too much sooner, and yet we've got a short window to submit the legislation, which we're trying to do based on the resolution here tonight. But this is just the beginning of the process. Like I said, there'll be conversations with the revaluation once those notices go out and then through the budget process. So it's all going to come together. But that's where those conversations are more aptly had because at that point, we can talk about the actual impacts because there'll be knowns at that point that are just suppositions at this point.
Okay. And then any attempt to use this, what I guess is technically like enabling legislation, obviously would come back for approval before this council in the setting of the tax rate vis-à-vis the budget process, et cetera. So to your point, this is preliminary, but becomes a tool. But of course, we'll be back if it comes out of the toolbox.
Yeah, we'll come forward with our recommendations, assuming this goes forward, passes here tonight and then at general assembly level. But ultimately, the same honorable body would be the ones making that decision whether to implement the tool that we gave you.
Thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Councilman Ricks?
Thank you. Just a couple of brief follow-ups. So while I certainly share concerns about where the city's budget is going in the long-term spending concerns, that's not what we're here to discuss this evening because this resolution, even if enacted by the General Assembly, it would have nothing to do with the total amount of revenue being raised by the city. It would just be a matter of the ratio between residential and commercial as affected by the tax revaluation and the revised valuations, right?
Correct.
And if I'm understanding correctly, and I believe I am, that the city council, subject to Mayor Oviedo, the city council is the body that has the power to set the tax rates each year at the budget hearings. And so if the General Assembly does grant us this power to give us a little additional flexibility, that doesn't mean that this city council has to exercise that authority one way or another and setting the tax rate would all be part of a vote at the time of the budget hearings. I suppose that's more of a question to the council solicitor.
You are correct.
Thank you. That's all for now.
Councilman, you already used up your 10 minutes.
Just asking for a quick rebuttal. A comment. Let's move to the public. They've been waiting patiently. I think we've heard enough. At this time, we will move to take any comments from members of the public. Our Sergeant of Arms isn't here today, so Lauren or Mr. Cody, if you could turn the mic on for everybody. And you don't need to stand in line, take your time. Everyone will get an opportunity to speak. And when you come up, if you just identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, distinguished council members, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. I'm Lauren Slocum with the President of the Central Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight on behalf of many Warwick businesses who have great concern over the passage of PCR 3523. A resolution requesting the General Assembly amend the property tax ratio between Class 1 and Class 2. We know that the administration has taken great care in preparing this proposal and we trust that you, as council members, will carefully consider all of the comments shared tonight when making your decision, as you've done in the past. We acknowledge that property taxes are a significant source of revenue for the city and are needed to provide the services that it offers. We know you have a job to do regarding this proposal, but we have a job to do as well. As we stand before you tonight and represent the many Warwick businesses who have expressed deep concern, these are the same businesses that offer accommodations, food and entertainment for our community and our visitors. The same businesses that supply products, services and job opportunities for Warwick's residents, your constituents. These businesses do not utilize the same city services, send students to school. They pay their water and sewer bill based on use like everyone else. While there may be no intent to increase the burden placed on businesses currently, if passed, this change would open the door to putting an undue burden on business at any given time in the future. What might seem on the surface like a small potential increase cannot be balanced by the wonderful things the city has to offer. We believe this will discourage economic growth. Location is a choice. We should not be adding another layer of burden. They can easily choose another community. We do not need to drive vacancy rates up and commercial real estate values down. While I think we are all in agreement that Warwick has a wonderful coastline, multiple parks and open spaces, offers easy and convenient highway access and has multiple modes of transportation and areas for development, we do not think this is a good proposal. This will not only impact commercial industrial property owners, but also the businesses who occupy that space, their customers, employees and local individuals and families who pay rent, your constituents. We respectfully request that you deny or at least table PCR 3523 for further discussion and acknowledge that having a healthy, prosperous business community is critical to the overall well-being of the community and its residents. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Rob Cody, Ward 7. Have a couple of comments and also a couple of concerns. As I read this legislation, the bottom of the page says put forth on behalf of Mayor Pacozzi. But as I look around, I don't see Mayor Pacozzi here. And I would think that with something that affects so many of his constituents that he would be able to be here to answer questions directly. I understand he has a staff, but it, to me, it's a little bit disingenuous. Having said that, as I look around the room, many of these business people I trade with and many of them are my friends. And having done the math and participated in council meetings, probably more than just about anybody in this room, I can virtually guarantee everybody in this room, they're going to see major tax increases. I'm glad that WPRO covered this and I'm thanking Mr. Lattisaw for putting some information out, but I think it would have been nice for my councilman to inform me or to put something out publicly so his constituents knew what was going on. But I have some genuine concerns because as we all know, the city pays the bills by tax revenue. And the maximum amount of money, if I'm wrong, that the city can raise in a maximum tax increase is $8.6 million. We've had that discussion. Well, right now, we have a $7.5 million deficit. So I just want to talk about money for a little bit, just some basic mathematics.
I think we're going well beyond the scope.
Well, not really because the scope is taxes, which the taxes are raised by, we raise the taxes by implementing tax structures.
But we're here on a specific resolution, which doesn't change the tax levy. So I don't think we need to go there.
We pay taxes to pay the bills, right? And we have a lot of bills coming up, which the taxes will have to pay that burden. Am I correct?
Let's not go beyond what open meetings allows us to do. We've got a resolution on the table.
And I'm talking about the resolution. So please let me go because this is simple math.
But not on anything other than the resolution.
All right. This resolution in time will increase the taxes. We have to increase taxes because of the spending that we have.
I got to stop you there. It wouldn't.
How can, all right. You got to hear me out, okay? I didn't interrupt you. All right. I have watched in the last few weeks about the additional monies that this city has spent and is going to spend. How are we going to raise those funds? If we can only raise 8.6 million, we can only raise, we can only raise a certain amount of money. We have a revale coming up, right? I'm expecting that my revale will increase my taxes as well as the business community. That pays for the bills, that pays for the expenditures that the city, that we expend, right? So with all the extra money that we have expended through contracts and healthcare and everything else, and the possibility of new schools, where are we going to raise that money in the future?
Again, that's a point to be made during the budget hearings, not tonight. We've got a resolution and there's rules for open meetings and we're going well beyond the scope.
No, we're not. We're talking about the tax structure.
Mr. Chairman, I would have to agree with the Director that
You agree with anything, shut me down, Mr. Howe. The fact of the matter is this is about taxes.
This is about a resolution that's going to go to the State House. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please speak to the resolution.
All right. The resolution has the implication and the ramifications to set tax values. Those tax values are set to raise money to pay the bills of the city. Am I correct?
Within the set levy.
Within the set levy.
So there's no increase, there's no money, there's no movement in the levy with this ordinance.
So you're prepared to say to this audience that this resolution, if passed by the General Assembly and passed by this city council, will in no way at any given time affect tax structure or tax rates? Is that what you're prepared to say?
Tax structure and tax rates are different from levy. The levy stays the same.
Right. The levy stays the same, right?
So we got to focus on this resolution.
It's revenue neutral, right? A third of the properties go up, a third go down and a third remain the same.
I didn't say that, right? But let's focus on the resolution. We're interested in hearing your comments on the resolution. There is no answer to the question. The levy can't change.
So you're saying that, are you saying that the resolution will not affect the amount of monies in taxes that people have to pay on commercial properties?
In absolute terms, it will bring in $0.
$0. And you say that's for perpetuity?
Absolute.
Okay. I rest my case. Thank you.
Identify yourself, please.
My name is Tim Collins. My wife and I live in, too loud? Bring it closer? Okay. My name is Tim Collins. My wife and I live in Gaspie and we have a business in Canemecat. Thank you for allowing me to speak up here. First of all, in all due deference to the Director, you know, the comment about having the airport here and the highways here really has no effect upon us, the small businesses, okay? My wife's business, the local pizza joint, the local mini-mart, people that own those, the people that go to those are the people that are local. So saying that Warwick is a great place to do business because we have an airport and we have highway access might be good for some of these bigger places, but they do nothing for us, okay? We just opened our business December 30th. So we're brand new to the community here. We struggled to get the money that we needed to be here. If there's any changes in our tax rate, we could quite potentially close our business. Just started. I'm sure everybody that's behind me that's come here is probably feeling the same thing. How are these taxes, the changes in the taxes going to affect my business? We were told when my wife decided to move to Warwick, move her business, you're crazy. Don't move to Warwick. When we told them we were going to buy a business, buy a building, we were told, don't buy a building. When we were told that we were going to do work.
Excuse me.
I'm getting away from the resolution.
Just address the legislation.
This is going to affect our ability to stay in business. It's what I fear. And I don't care who says it, you're putting this in place for a reason. This is being put into place so that we can juggle the numbers a little bit here and there. And it's going to affect people to say that my tax rate is not going to change. If you can write that down for me and promise me over the next five years that my tax rate's not going to change, then I will agree with you. But you don't put a resolution up like this to change how you're doing taxes if there's no intent to change taxes.
Just to clarify, and I'm sure you put a budget together before you opened your business and went through all the mathematics to make sure it was going to be viable and things like that. So when you did that, are your taxes currently within that budget that you estimated?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So the proposal we're putting forth is to maintain that tax levy for the whole commercial class, not to increase, not to bring in one more new dollar from that commercial class. But there's other components that have to be considered as well. But if you're good, we're not looking to increase your number, we're hoping to maintain that number. We're going to put a lot of time and effort into seeing how that impacts.
So what you're saying is if there's, just to pick a figure, $5 million coming in from the business class, there will only be $5 million coming in from the business class? But you don't guarantee where that money, how that's going to be dispersed?
Well, there's two things, two things at play. One, with or without a revale, the annual budget process could impact on your taxes without this resolution.
But that would be across the board.
Right, right. So I don't want to give out information without putting the caveats behind it. The second thing is the reevaluation itself will come into play. You said you did renovations on the building. So that in and of itself will cause some increase in your taxes.
Understood.
There's things like that. And then there's an allowance for growth, right? So the money that we received from the levy didn't include the new North Point building that was built off of Helene Road and things like that. So it won't be an absolute number that, $5 million, so you referenced, it's actually a bigger number, but to make the point, yes. But then there'll be things that are reflected in that to reflect things like growth, modernization and different revaluations in the annual budget cycle.
Okay.
But other than that, no, we're not looking to raise dollar one. That's why we came up with the plan we did. And I wish you well and please come and see me.
Thank you for your time.
We can see what we can do.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Mr. President, Chairman. Michael Panther of 30 Dayton Ave in Warwick. I'm a resident, all my life in Warwick, Rhode Island. I have a couple of businesses in Warwick, Rhode Island. It's a choice. I have businesses in other cities and towns. This particular package has no security whatsoever. I am very insecure. It's an open book. I'm not happy with it whatsoever because of the fact you cannot guarantee me year one, year two and year three that I'm not going to be in business because of this package. You cannot guarantee it and I respect that. No one can.
Well, I can because that wouldn't be as a result of this resolution. Now, year one, year two, year three, there's different annual budgets and decisions the council has to make. That can have an impact on your taxes, but that's not part of this resolution. But you mentioned you're also a Warwick resident. So there's the other side of the equation where you're going to have a change to your house taxes directly related to this resolution that other business owners that don't live in the city won't have.
So we have this revale that was put off that's going to come and catch up with us, retroactive, right? We're looking for something like that? That's going to come and kick us in the butt. Maybe a little bit, a little bit, just a little bit.
Let me educate you a little bit. Well, revaluation is revenue neutral to the city overall. City can't raise a penny from a revaluation.
Another area valve coming up for 2024, the 10-year, which is going to start probably a year prior, which is 2023. That's going to really be a huge impact.
But that doesn't raise your taxes either.
But it's going to go after the commercial. We can't afford it.
It's not.
We cannot afford this.
What we're trying to do is maintain the taxes you're currently paying, not increase them.
It's just very complicated. I made a choice to come to Warwick. Warwick, council members, you all came here, you were here, you live here, used to be a place of attraction, it used to be a place of where you wanted to be. Nothing brings people here anymore, a highway and airport, they drive people away. They don't want, people don't want to be around that. I work in the city of Warwick, going door to door, to business to business. I do this every day in my free time to see the complications of opening businesses in this city, to see the empty storefronts in this business, in this city, the same with 3500. I personally think that this package is going to be a burden on taxpayers of the businesses, the community. I think it's going to eventually put us out of business and it's going to now impact the residential, which you're trying not to do. It's going to impact the residential anyway because that's all you're going to have left here. I got to tell you, I have offers from other cities, I have chose this place here, but lately I have regrets. I personally think in a proper manner, if we hadn't known about this, I understand your time of urgency here because it was selected to wait this long, okay? That's not our fault. We did our job, you guys did, somebody did do their job. So bottom line is, you're taking it out on the business community, as far as I'm concerned. This is like an open contract with any fire department, police department or anybody. It's future danger. We don't know what's, the administration's doing a great job, but who knows what's going to happen with the next administration or the next council member that comes in here? They have full control to do whatever they want and we can't allow that. That's got to stop.
No, our tax caps that we put in this resolution are still far lower than most other communities in Rhode Island.
I would suggest that we table this. I would suggest that we table this, please. This is not a full house. Thank you for thinking that we have a great turnout. We do not have a great turnout. We had a great turnout. There would be no room in this place. But we, you know what? I was given two days. I found this out Friday morning. Shame on that. I started politics 28 years ago, and it was never like that. We need to know. The business community needs to be able to gather, get together, and have our own thoughts, do our own homework. And I think in fairness to the business people in this city, the administration and the council need to give us that. We make this community.
Again, your voice will be heard, but it'll be heard...
But we need it to be heard before something like this gets thrown out the window. Let's not lock it in yet. Let's table it. Let's put it aside. Give us what we want. Give us a couple weeks. Let's talk about it, and let's show us more... Listen, there's some answers, that I have these answers as well, and there's some answers that are unanswered, because they say we will worry about it at that time. We will try to figure it out when the time is right. When is the time right?
So the budget hearings of where you would make those sorts of arguments, when we have an actual budget figure, when we have your actual revaluation numbers, and we can have honest, intelligent discussions about the impact. But this sitting body can still decide not to implement the additional flexibility that this ordinance provides.
But will they?
That's the argument, but that's the argument you'll make in front of the budget hearings at that time.
If you gave me access to a million-dollar account tomorrow, I promise you, I'm not gonna take a penny. Trust me, I'm gonna take some money out of that thing real fast, okay? I can't agree, I have, I'm sorry. Security, please, guys. Think about your businesses in Warwick. I agree and respect everything that you guys have done. A lot of respect for every one of you. But just give, in fairness, in fairness, because this is not fear, give the business community an opportunity for a few weeks. No notification to the Chambers of Commerce, no notification to the Small Business Association. I reached out to RIPAC and had to be on the phone with them and do research my whole entire weekend. You probably all have a steak at the table. I wasn't. I was busy till 11:30, 12 o'clock at night, nonstop. That's not fear for a taxpayer. Not only we have two businesses in Warwick, okay? That I've been doing for 30 years here. Not only do I have a residential place that I pay taxes with, not only did I have rental properties all over Warwick in the last 20 years, that's not fear to me. It's not fear to any of us. Table it, please. Just give us some time where we can communicate, where the council can have a chance to talk to their constituencies and say, I mean, they said, "Call your councilman." My councilman, Mr. Chairman, I have his cell phone number. But there's no way of getting through to the regular numbers. I don't know. I got 14 members here who haven't had a chance, nothing against you personally. You're busy, you guys get it. But not even we had a chance to reach out to that council member, because it was Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Please, guys, for the sake of the business and the future of Warwick, Rhode Island, just take it into consideration out of respect for us. This will tell us where our respect is, if it's even accepted here. Give us an opportunity to build up more businesses to talk about this. Give us an opportunity to hear a little bit more security out of you guys. These are the two or three questions that are unknown, because we have to probably evaluate later on, later on down the line. That's what we're afraid of.
Those questions weren't properly appropriate to this resolution. That's why...
But the fact that you have to look at evaluation and see where it goes then, and then make a decision? That's like saying, "Hey, Mike, I'm sorry, but you gotta pay an extra $10,000 this year." I don't know. So in fairness, let's just, let's get together, act like a community, and a business, you know, the business family. Let's get everybody together. Give us an opportunity to get more businesses involved, get some answers from the administration, and please, from our council members, and give us something, a little more security. We have no security here.
Again, I think there was a lot of misinformation that went out, and it did incite fear. But you shouldn't have that fear. We're not looking to raise anybody's taxes.
My dad had me as a child, and he said, "I'm gonna take care of you for the rest of your life." I ended up homeless on the streets. So who do I trust? I trust me. So please, guys, I'm asking that you table this. I respect you. I appreciate your hard work and efforts. Please, I'm not downing anybody here, but this just needs to be put aside and asked. Let's just do something here so we can get more answers, please. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Casella. I live in Ward 1. My first question is, you mentioned that we had to refund $750,000 to Rhode Island Energy. Was that because we hadn't done a revale in four years, or why was that?
There was no refund. It's just the mechanics of our tax rate, based on the structure that we're under now, required that the tangible personal property rate be no more than double the residential rate.
Oh, so it was a tangible...
Yes, it was a tangible personal property.
Okay, I just, I can understand the concern. I don't mean to diminish your presentation, but when I was listening to it, a few buzzwords buzzed out of it. And I think these are part of the reasons that people in the business community have concerns, because frankly, in this chamber, over the years, or at least in the last three or four years, there have been many contracts, many things that come forward, and there's a lot of vagaries that we really can't get, you know, real information on, because they flip by us and then they get approved, and we're out of here, and there's really no recourse. So I'll tell you that the words, you use the words, these are your words. We typed them as you went along, because we were listening very intently. You did a great job in your presentation. Flexibility. You're not looking, you said the words, "We're not looking to increase property taxes." And I believe you don't want to, but that doesn't mean that this body won't choose to allow someone in the future to in an emergency, which I believe is coming with all of our new deferred, the debt that's coming. Our debt service is gonna require some more money somewhere, and we've gotten used to the COVID cash, and that's gone. No restrictions. We're not looking to increase tangible... We want to, we want flexibility options. That's a scary one. The city needs flexibility so that we can create balance. Balance is 50 and 50, not 57 and, you know, 100, or whatever those numbers are. I'm not a tax guy. This opportunity kind of sets us apart from the suburban assessments, because it's a whole different animal of... And you made some comparisons to Massachusetts. And, you know, the one thing that stuck out to me is Massachusetts has been, the nickname is Taxachusetts. And it's been that way for years, and I think Massachusetts is probably, because it's our neighbor, it's a good comparison. But I think when you look at Massachusetts, you look at a median household income of maybe 100% more than it is here in Rhode Island. You look at businesses that have to be in a state like Massachusetts in order to conduct an international business. So it's a totally different animal, you know? It's a comparison that you wish to make because you've worked in Mass before, but I don't know that it scares us when we hear. We wanna feel like Taxachusetts.
To address the flexibility issue, it all points back to the resolution. We're changing one thing in there, the percentage of the differential between the residential tax rate and the commercial tax rate. So currently, the law requires that we set our commercial tax rate at one and a half times, no more, right? So the flexibility, we're already at the max. The flexibility that this ordinance gives the council is that it would allow them to go up to 1.75 times the residential tax rate when they set the commercial tax rate. But it's up to them what they do with the levy. When they say there's no intention to, our intention in making this proposal is to equalize the revenue coming in. So currently, we get $22 million roughly from the tangible personal property class, based on what I explained about the national grid. That would drop considerably below that $22 million, maybe to 17 or 18 million, just based on our prior legislation. So the flexibility, I'm only talking about allowing the council then to adjust that rate to just equal the amount of the revenue that they got before. That's why I said your arguments and your comments in front of the budget hearings will be much more appropriate to me.
But I mean, you've been in this council chamber before, and as regaled as it is, and as honorable it is, as it is, I mean, if push comes to shove, and there's, and we're in 2024, and we need to raise some money, they're not gonna levy any taxes on the homeowner, because taxes, businesses don't vote, and that's my opinion. But my last other thing I wanna say, because I wanna thank Councilman Howe for pointing out the moment of silence. I know he knows my son flies the Black Hawk, and until I found out it was Kentucky, I was shivering in my shoes. So thank you for taking that time. I appreciate that. And as for, as for Councilman McAllister, when you're done with your phone, I'm surprised at you, because I didn't read...
Excuse me, sir. Do you have any comments?
Oh, no, I don't have anything more to ask him, but I wanted to ask you a question about...
Mr. Casella, I'd like to interrupt. This has to do with what we're talking about, the resolution. Ask him, this council president, and making little jabs just isn't professional.
Well, he was on his phone. I wanted to make sure he heard me.
Yeah, we understand, former Rhode Island. We understand. If you have any further questions for the resolution, thank you.
My question to the council president, which pertains to this resolution, is that it's coming to you, the council president, from the administration.
This has nothing to do with the resolution. Sorry, Chairman, go ahead.
The administration is the answering questions. So if you have a question on the resolution...
I'll ask it to him, to Mr. Lapierre.
Dupuy.
Dupuy. Your office prepared this resolution for presentation before this honored party.
After some internal discussions.
After some internal discussions, and you, it's being brought to the body through the council president. That's what it said. Through the council president, from the city administrator, this resolution will come to the floor for a vote. That's why I was addressing the council president. And so if I, I'm gonna ask you, you know the council president well enough to know that he's employed in private sector as a...
Nothing has to do with the resolution. The people who are concerned, Mr. Casella, the people who are concerned, business owners, they're not for your political attack. They're concerned about their businesses.
Well, I'm concerned.
Mr. Chairman, suspend. Everybody suspend.
Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call you Neil. Neil, this is Barry Cook and I, and you have had several meetings about taxes, so...
That's fine, Barry.
Good evening, Neil. I must say that everything I've met with you in the past, you've been very professional.
Thank you.
Straightforward, and tonight you're doing the same, so I appreciate that. I wanna say that I appreciate, first of all, Barry Cook, Namquod Drive, 20-year resident, president of the Warwick Taxpayers Association. I wanna thank the small businesses for turning out this evening. The Chamber of Commerce was well-spoken, made some excellent points. So I have, just have a couple of observations, and I guess it would be directed to Neil, quite frankly. I'd like to know why and where discussion for the need of this resolution came from. What was its origin?
Well, it started when we requested to delay the last reevaluation because of the instability of the market and an effort to make sure that we put procedures in place. It actually goes beyond the last revale. When we did a revale in 2018, there were some burden shifts that I felt could have been avoided if we had tax classification that was designed specifically for Warwick. But I was just hired in 2018. We jumped right in, and we did the revale. We didn't have time to get into these kind of discussions at that point, but that's why we're here tonight.
How closely is this resolution linked with the upcoming revale? Is there a connection, direct connection, a correlating connection, or no connection?
Well, there's definitely a connection, but it's more that the time of the year, we're in budget time, we're in revale mode. It's not directly related to this revale, but more to give the municipality some flexibility, again, to use that word, going forward, and not be locked into a one-size-fits-all tax classification system that the state put out for any city or town. And we're certainly not any city or town. I think Warwick is one of the better communities to live, work, and play. And this is the policy that works best for that.
The, if I understand correctly, as I read the resolution and some of the accompanying documents, at the moment, 75% of the tax revenue is earmarked towards residential property? Do I understand that correctly?
From the current levy that's out there?
What was currently on the books?
Close to that, not exactly.
Okay. So that 75%, according to what I've read, would now fall to 57%?
No, no, no.
That's what it says.
Right, that's the percentage of the differential between the residential rate and the commercial tax rate. So right now, we have a residential tax rate of 1873. And based on the ordinance we're working under currently, it can be 2810 as a maximum, right? So with this legislation, had we had it previously, that 2810 could have been a higher number. But again, at this point, it wouldn't be done in the middle of a year or even in the middle of an annual budget cycle, but at the time of the revale, so the revenue can be neutralized by that class.
So just to make sure that I'm not, I don't wanna leave confused. I can't confuse. I don't wanna lose confused.
Sure.
So when I reference the 75 and 57%, which I think Councilman Lattisaw also referenced, when I read that, I can get it out of my phone, but when I read that, it seems to say to me that a minimum of 75%, and then it changes that minimum to 57%. So what I got from that was, and I could be wrong, I've been wrong before, but it looks to me like what we're saying is, we're gonna take the commercial percentage, which was roughly 25% now, and we're gonna boost that up to 43%. So again, the way I read that is, it seems to me that we're looking to shift the burden to businesses by 18 basis points. So we're gonna say, according to what I read, it'll be 43% earmarked towards businesses and 57% towards residential. Now, what further I get from that is, I correlate that and I tie it in to the new revale. And my process of thinking might be messed up, but I think it's a direct correlation, because if we're successful, the city's successful in passing this resolution and getting the enabling legislation, the city council will be able to lessen the effects of the revale, which in North Providence, residenials were up 49%. So if we make a direct correlation between the two, it appears to me that what we're doing is, we're gonna mask, we're gonna disguise what happened with the revale. So we'll push the burden more towards businesses, and I think Mr. Lattisaw said it, or someone said it, that a lot of these business people don't live in Warwick. A lot of these business people who are gonna get this big boost towards more from the community, or more from the commercial side, will lessen the burden on the residents. But that's just disguising what's happening. And that's my opinion. It's a disguise.
The math doesn't work, so I'm gonna give you the actual numbers. Last year, we had a total tax levy of, I'm just rounding it off, to $226 million, right? All the vehicles are now outside of that, because that gets reimbursed by the state, so it's not part of that number where it used to be. Of that, 67 million, almost 68 million was from the commercial segment, and about 22 million was from the tangible personal property. Like I said before, commercial and tangible personal property owners got reductions at the last revale that they weren't necessarily looking for, just based on our tax rate structure. Nothing to do with the actual revale, but the tax classification system that we currently work in. So we wanted to broaden that, increase it a little bit, to make it more specific to the types of land uses that we have in Warwick, with an eye towards making sure we pay attention to development, making sure we ensure growth and profitability. We're partners with the business community. As they go, the city goes, and we're well aware of that, and we will pay attention to that.
I didn't come to debate with you, Neil. I've never debated with you in the past, and I don't wanna do it tonight. You're ahead of the game for me on this subject matter, so I'm trying to play catch-up a little bit.
Sure.
Okay. Now, at the same time, the council asked to look at this resolution, the state, according to Senator Jarry, is moving along the lines of eliminating, as I understood it, up to $100,000 of taxes on tangible property. So while the state is suggesting that these small business people who have tangible property, I don't know, cash registers, computers, whatever that is, office furniture, the state's saying, "Well, up to the first $100,000, we're no longer gonna tax you on that."
Well, they're gonna reimburse the cities and towns for that.
Yeah, but these people aren't gonna pay it. Not directly. They're gonna pay it indirectly. They're not gonna pay it directly. They're gonna get taxed one way, shit, from one way or another.
And we support...
But they're not gonna pay it directly anymore.
We support that concept.
So we seem to be moving in different directions from the state. Now, I'm gonna point out, one, if I might, I wanna point out flexibility, how it affects the taxpayers as it relates to this resolution, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman. I live in Gatsby Point. I live on leased land. I own my home, but I pay rent for the land. Now, this is how I got to meet Neil many years ago. So let me just point out, so what happens on leased land is, for people like me, and I think Mr. Collins said he was from Gatsby Point too, I'm not sure, but we pay the rent to the people that own the land. They pay taxes on all the 10 acres. Then I pay taxes like... Then I pay taxes, like your 200 homeowners, on our property. So I get a tax bill from the city. So I get a tax bill that includes, quite frankly, a taxation on the land. Now, Mr. Dupree and I have been around and around on this. But what ends up happening is, if you live on the water in Gatsby Point, there's a special assessment for your view. Now, I don't own the land. But in my discussion with Mr. Dupree, Neil, in years gone by, there's a formula for establishing how much my lot is worth, even though I don't own it. So my lot is worth, last time we talked.
I'm just going to ask you to tie it back into the resolution, though, if you could.
I'm getting to the point. If you don't interrupt me, I'll finish. The price of my, the value of my land is $90,000. So the Gatsby Point Association went to Joe Hart, who's our state rep.
You have one minute, Mr. Cook.
I'm sorry?
One minute?
There's a bill pending in the House right now to eliminate the special assessment that Warwick charges us for being on the water with a water view. Now, that's flexible. I get charged extra having a water view. So I'm almost done. So I'm concerned about flexibility. I know how it impacts me. I have to pay taxes on land that I don't own. And then I pay the Brown family rental for the land that they own, and they pay taxes on all the land. So I'd like to say, in closing, I believe this resolution is thoroughly informed. I believe the council has a responsibility to all residents, all taxpayers, all business owners, to table this resolution. It seems to me what's going to end up happening in the long run, I can't guarantee it, but if they can take your tax rate on businesses and multiply it by the residential rate 1.7 times, look out because the flexibility, I'm all set. Look out because the flexibility is coming your way, just like it came my way. Good to see you, Neil.
Same here.
Any other questions or comments from the public?
Good evening. My name is Tamara McKenny, and I am the owner of Appenog Brewing Company. For anyone who's been there, we are actually Pontiac, and I know that. We named the brewing company after the mills that my father, grandfather, and great-grandfather owned in Appenog. I'm here tonight, and I will keep it directed to that. It won't go through our whole story why we're here. I am concerned as a business owner that when government uses terms like flexibility or another tool in our toolbox, I am concerned as a business owner that that tool will not eventually be a weapon used against us. We chose, I chose to come to Warwick. I am in the middle of looking for another business that we are going to put in the middle of all of Appenog, Appenaders, as we call them. And I will not do that business if you pass this resolution. I will not risk my capital, my investment, or any of this so that you can have another tool in your toolbox without numbers and data to back it up. So while I have a business here, and for any of you who are in this building, who then have to drive around the arid community that surrounds this building, and you know in your heart, and I want to collaborate here, I want to be part of a team, but right now, I feel assaulted. I don't feel part of a team. If you have read any interview I have ever done with any media, all I talk about is how great the people of Warwick are to deal with, how great all of the town people are to deal with, how easy it is to do business here. But when I got the email about this, I literally felt assaulted. So even if it has to go through, it leaves open communication with these constituents so that we can all work together and collaborate together. It is not saying, don't put it forward, but at least allow enough time for people to be able to have calm discourse. So I am just saying right now, if this goes through, whatever plans I had with, you know, working on, you know, a 20,000, one-acre, 20,000 square feet, one-acre development, $5 million development, I'm going to go elsewhere until we figure it out. So I'm, and that's not a threat, that's just, it doesn't make sense with the unknown. So I'm just saying, when enough of the questions that were brought up are, we don't know, it's a tool or whatever, and I appreciate that, but for now, I'm going to just stand back. So I'm just saying that, as I love Warwick, I'm a lifelong committed person to being here. I wanted nothing more than to open a business here. But I will then put whatever development plans I had on hold. So it's not like a threat, it's just a, can we all take a step back and collaborate? Work as a team. Everybody here loves Warwick, right? We're all business owners here. You all clearly are public servants, giving up your binge-watching of Netflix tonight to be here. So we're all on the same team, but right now, we're not feeling like we're on the same team. So if we could just put a pause button on it so we can all be on the same team, that's all I'm asking tonight, is just put a pause on it. Not a no, not a yes. Just put a pause so we can all get on the same page. Thank you all for your time.
Hello. Good evening. Chairman McElroy, President McAllister, members of the Warwick City Council. My name's Armin Lucy, Ward 9. I've been a resident and personal property owner, both residential and commercial, for over 35 years. I want to stick to the resolution, so I'm going to start with, in 1997, the General Assembly passed a law specific to Warwick, and the council adopted that set the 75% ratio, residential to commercial. That ratio held true every year until 2004. In 2004, the city shifted from 75% to about 66.23%. So it's been that way for 19 years. So perhaps the resolution, we can have a compromise. Instead of going down to the 57%, how about we revise it to the 67.23% to keep the ratio the same as it's been the last 19 years? The only reason to go to 57% is to disproportionately overcharge of the commercial property owners. That's the only thing it does. As an example, in the 22 levy, if the commercial rate was, if the residential rate was 75% of the commercial rate, it would have raised, let me get my paperwork here. The residential rate of 18.73. You add a third to that, which is tied to the 75%, it would have been 24.97, not 28.10. If it was 24.97, the commercial levy would have been reduced from 68 million roughly to 60 million. So the commercial property owners were overcharged 7.5 million just in the year 2022. Now, you could go back and do the math for all the 19 years, so. I guess my question is, why are we not holding to the law the General Assembly passed at the 75%? We're doing the.
So in 2004, the state passed an enabling legislation which allowed the city to switch from the Warwick-specific tax classification system that you're referencing there to a system that had a 1.5% or 1.5x ratio for the commercial rate.
Okay.
And a doubling for the tangible personal property. So I wasn't here at the time, I wasn't part of the conversation, but the powers that be at the time decided that was the thing to do. But that actually caused some of the shift of the burden from the tangible personal property that we have now by going to that system that they put in place.
So that '97 law was overridden by '04? It's still on the books, it was?
It's still on the books, but the state-enabling one says that any community that goes through a revale can then use this system, and so the city switched at that point in time.
Well, has the city considered just adopting to the 1.5x to keep the current ratio the same that it's been for the last 19 years? The only reason to change the ratio is to charge the commercial people more taxes.
Again, the problem with the state-enabling legislation was its one-size-fits-all. And I, you know, I've been doing this for 35 years. I've seen a lot of different things in a lot of different states. I've traveled all over the country to talk about taxation and stuff like that. But Warwick is unique. It's a great place to do business. You know, we had some comments before that the airport is in an economic development tool. We had North Point build a 500,000-square-foot facility right across from the airport, directly because of the airport. That brings new employees, to patronize the smaller businesses. There's a symbiotic relationship of every business and every resident. So as much as you own businesses here, you're also a resident of the city. And this resolution benefits you on one hand and maintains the revenue on the other hand. We're not trying to increase it.
Well, I'll make one last point, and then I'll wrap it up. If the city, if that 57% were in effect for the 2022 tax year, they could have raised, the commercial rate could have gone to $32 and raised another $10.5 million. So let's say this 57% passes, General Assembly, council approves it, it's on the books, okay? You leave the 1810 the same, or if you increase, because of the escalation of residential real estate, is up 30%, you kept the levy the same, so you raise the assessment, you lower the levy. So let's say the 18.
We don't lower the levy, we lower the rate, and so right now, all the rates.
You'd lower the rate, but you'd increase the assessment to make the levy the same. So let's say the 1810 stayed the same. If this 57% were on the books, you'd charge another $10.5 million.
The 1873 will not stay the same. It will definitely go down.
Right, it will go down because the commercial will go up.
No, because the market went up, right? So anytime the market goes up overall, the rates have to come down. We can't raise any money from the revale, so, and we're limited to 4% tax levy growth. But we're not looking for that, that's not part of this. We're trying to maintain the levy, and then we can have budget discussions.
I don't see why you couldn't just keep it the same, keep the ratio the same. So I'm opposed to the resolution, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
One moment, sorry. If people on their phone loudly having conversations or listening to things, could please do it elsewhere so I can actually hear the speakers, I would appreciate it.
You're going to tell them that? But he was on his phone?
Sir, am I on the phone talking right now? I'm not. Excuse me, I'm speaking about people who are on the phone loudly in a conversation. Thank you for being incredible.
I own a small little business in Warwick now for 60 years. What Noah's watching here is, where does the tax go? It goes to the consumer. Right? Am I right? We have to pass the taxes, we're serving, and it always goes to the consumer. And the business I own, the people that use my business don't have, not all of them, but some of them are way less fortunate than probably you guys are. As far as what this gentleman, not a reputation for me, he is going to run that. You guys were very generous, and I'm sure you all walked around the businesses that are here now. So remember that. This should be pushed. Where everybody gets a chance to know exactly what's going on, it's not, you can't run away. Listen to it written on paper. And you should understand what paper said. You should understand what's going on here. But what I'm saying, you guys are trying to snatch shit through. And this is how I know that. Because I was really hard in my big five years. You keep talking about Boston. I did a ton of work in Boston. That's what I did. Big stuff. Not like this stuff. They're going to throw us from the ground here. That's my house. But I'm telling something else. Where I'm living in Boston, the New York area, where I was, you said, where do we get the Boston law? I used to tell you, here it is, sister. Where I'm in Boston, I know what you guys can hear. Build yourself a studio. Brother areas, it gets passed down to the consumer. One day, it's not a flow. I don't make them. I get a good talent. I'm fine. The business I live in is with my brother. I've been with it for 60 years. And when it does, it pays for itself. Be a little bit more like it. 60 years. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Angelica Penta. I, myself and my husband, we own a business, Jell's Kitchen, in Warwick. I'm going to make it short and sweet and simple. First, I want to thank Councilman Lattisaw for sticking up for businesses and for asking the questions that nobody else maybe had the time to ask because we were running our businesses this weekend. But I would like to say that one of my businesses is in West Warwick. My husband wanted nothing more than for our business to be in Warwick. I finally snuck that in there and got a business in Warwick and somehow convinced him to let us buy the building, which we just owned for a year. He told me the other day after he read this that if our taxes continue to go up and we can't afford it, we're going to have to sell our business. Now, I worked way too hard to get to where I am, to sell my business because of taxes. So I will do whatever it takes to stay into business, even if I have to raise my prices and write a little thank-you note on the bottom about taxes. But what I'm going to say is a different approach. I want, I know many of you people, and you all have children or grandchildren. I know your family is all in the schools. When our community needs support, where do they go? They don't go to Lowe's, they don't go to Stop &amp; Shop, they don't go to the big box stores or Amazon. They come to the small businesses. We're the ones that support everything. We support the schools, we support the Little Leagues. I know many of you probably have grandkids that play on teams. Look at their T-shirts. You don't see anything that is a big box store. It is all small businesses. We make up the community of Warwick. Being in Warwick is a choice. I've had personal invites from plenty of the cities to open a business there. They beg us to go there because they want us to help their community. We choose to be in Warwick. It is a choice. Keep our community strong. Keep our small businesses here and allow us to do what we do and keep our community strong and thriving. You hurt small businesses, you're going to hurt our community. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Here or none? Do I hear a motion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is now 8:36, and the Intergovernmental Committee is now ended.
The next committee is the Appointments Committee, which can meet at this time.
The time is now 8:37, and the Appointments Committee comes to order. First up, acceptance of the minutes from the committee meeting on February 6, 2023. So do I have a motion to approve? And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. And it's been brought to my attention that the one appointee on the docket for this evening, Ms. Chase, was unfortunately unable to attend. As you're familiar with our rules, for all new appointments, we do require the appointee to be present. So we're going to hold this one, and.
So we're gonna hold this one and we will meet on this at our next meeting. So I'm gonna ask that this be held to April 17th. And as there is no more business before the Appointments Committee, the Appointments Committee adjourns at 8:38. Oh, sorry. Can we move to hold?
Move to hold till April 17th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, as there's no more business before the Appointments Committee, we adjourn at 8:39. We're gonna go back into the full council meeting, but let's take a five-minute recess and then we'll come back to the full council meeting. Okay, we are now back into the full council meeting. For everyone following the agenda, we have done roll call, we've done general communications, we had the salute to the flag, the Potawatomi Community Association led us in that, we've done executive communications and we've done acceptance of the minutes. So now we are moving on to number one, appointments requiring confirmation. Committee report, appointments. The recommendation was to hold until April 17th.
Hold April 17th. Number two this evening is the consent calendar. First up is PCR 37-23, a resolution relative to bids. Committee report, finance.
Favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
More favorable action.
Seconded by Councilman Foley and Councilman Lattiser. Go ahead.
Thank you. Bid 2023 for 11, 2024 006, 2024 007, 2024 008, 2024 016, 2024 010, 2023 073, 2023 408, 2023 367, 2024 005, 2023 055, 2023 007, 2024 019, 2023 416, 2024 018, 2023 366, 2023 413, 2023 008, and 2023 414. That concludes the bid package, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Howe. Are there any questions or comments on the bid package? Okay, next up is PCR 38-23, a resolution relative to abatements. Committee report, finance.
More favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
One moment, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
I believe we have an abatement totaling $1,256.16.
I concur. More favorable action.
In that amount, and seconded by Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments on the abatements? Number three under the consent calendar is PCR 39-23, a resolution relative to claims. Committee report, public safety.
Request favorable action.
For action, Councilman Foley.
We have three claims, the rest is favorable.
We just need to get a second. You're moving it favorable, seconded by Councilman Ricks and Councilman McElroy. Go ahead, Councilman Foley. And you gotta go on the mic, please.
There you go. Other than that, I'm all set.
Yeah.
First claim is for Robert Bolton, PCR 39-23. First claim is for Robert Bolton in the amount of $300 for damage from a pothole. Second is Holly Brodeur, damage to a basketball hoop, favorable action amount of $279. And finally, Frank Pate for hitting a pothole, $300.
Thank you. I believe the second claim is $279.99, correct?
If that's what you believe, yes, 99 cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the claims? Okay, any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action on the consent calendar.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy? Miss Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, consent passes.
Thank you, the consent passes. I believe an item has been taken off the consent calendar, Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes. Formally bid 2024 014, Reaccreditation Services, is now PCR 41-23. Committee recommends favorable action with amendment.
Okay, so can you make the amendment? We'll get a second and then we'll have discussion.
Committee moves favorable action with amendment.
And the amendment is?
The amendment is to increase the bid for 13,000, from $3,000 from $10,000 to $13,000.
Okay, so it's to increase from $10,000 to $13,000?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, seconded by- Excuse me, Mr. President, which one are we on? This is an item that was removed from the consent calendar. Oh, okay. 2024 014, which is now PCR 41-23. So it's been moved, the amendment has been moved, I need a second, then we can have further discussion. Do we have a second on the councilman's amendment? Seconded by Councilman Foley, okay. Councilman Howe, can you just, what's the name of this, just for further explanation?
Yes, Mr. President, the amendment for the, it's called Reaccreditation Services. Major Sullivan requesting an additional 3,000 as this process is done every four years and there are different elements added to the accreditation, which of course is mandatory, that's done, as I said, every four years. So to add on the additional accreditation evaluations, it increased from $10,000 to a total package of $13,000, therefore increasing the requested amount $3,000 to $13,000.
Thank you. Any questions on the amendment? Okay, hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action on the amendment.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy? Yes. Miss Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, favorable amendment.
Thank you, the motion passes, favorable amendment. We are now moving to the unfinished business on the agenda. First up is PCO 18-22, Committee Report, Ordinance.
Committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Seconded by Councilman Lattiser, Councilwoman Travis. And I believe we have an additional co-sponsor on this, Councilwoman Travis. Okay. Yes, there's an amendment on this, so it's favorable as amendment and the solicitor will read the amendment, please.
If somebody wants to move the amendment as read into the record of the committee?
So moved.
So a motion has been, you're making a motion to read the amendment as recommended by committee? Yeah, as it was read in the committee.
Yes.
And seconded by Councilman McElroy. Okay, now, do we have any discussions on the amendment? This was the one.
Happy to answer any questions. We did read it fully into the record. If there's any questions about the specifics behind it, happy to answer that at this time. I know everybody was, President, paying attention, so.
Thank you very much. Okay, hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action on the amendment.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy? Yes. Miss Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, favorable to it.
Thank you. Councilman Howe.
Move PCO 18-22 as amended.
Seconded by Councilman Lattiser, Councilwoman Travis. Any questions or comments on this at this time? Hearing none-
Mr. President, I'm so sorry, I just wanted to take this moment to thank Councilman Lattiser, thank our solicitor and the members of the body that co-sponsored this important legislation. As well as, I'd like to also thank the administration for working with us to get this done and protect the citizens. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action as amended.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy? Yes. Miss Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, favorable to it.
Thank you. Councilman Howe.
Move PCO 18-22 as amended.
Seconded by Councilman Lattiser, Councilwoman Travis. Any questions or comments on this at this time? Hearing none-
Mr. President, I'm so sorry, I just wanted to take this moment to thank Councilman Lattiser, thank our solicitor and the members of the body that co-sponsored this important legislation. As well as, I'd like to also thank the administration for working with us to get this done and protect the citizens. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action as amended.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Miss Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, favorable to it.
Thank you. Councilman Howe.
Move PCO 18-22 as amended.
Seconded by Councilman Ricks.
Point of order? And I hate to spring this on Councilman Foley, unfortunately due to the Open Meetings Act and us being kind of the same committee, I was not able to bring this to his attention In a brief recess between committee meetings, following the public safety meeting, Ms. Toljan approached me while I was in the back and she advised me that she had been present but had not heard us call her name. By that time, we were, let's see, the Intergovernmental Committee had begun convening and so since then she has left. I would suggest holding the matter.
Well, I'll take a motion, we make a motion to hold?
So moved.
A motion to hold by Councilman Ricks, seconded by Councilman McElroy. Do you have a date, Councilman?
I would suggest April 17th.
April 17th. All those in favor of holding, all those in favor of holding this to April 17th, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hold until April 17th. Thank you for the information, sir. Next up, we're moving to new business. First up is PCO 9-23, Committee Report, Ordinance. For action, Councilman Lattiser.
Move favorable action on PCO 9-23.
Seconded by Councilwoman Travis. Councilman Howe? Any questions or comments on PCO 9-23? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Miss Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, first passage.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, motion passes. Next up is PCO 10-23, Committee Report, Ordinance.
Committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman Gephardt.
Move favorable action.
Seconded by Councilman Howe. Any questions or comments on PCO 10-23 that were not asked earlier this evening? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Miss Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, first passage.
Thank you, first passage. Next up is PCR 33-23, Committee Report, Public Safety.
Move, request, recommend favorable action.
For action, Councilman Lattiser.
Move favorable action on PCR 33-23.
Seconded by Councilman Howe. Any questions or comments on PCR 33-23 that were not asked earlier this evening in Public Safety Committee? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Miss Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, motion passes.
Thank you, motion passes. Number four this evening is PCR 35-23, Committee Report, Intergovernmental.
Committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman McElroy.
Favorable action.
Seconded by Councilman Foley and Councilman Howe. Any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening on PCR 35-23? There we go.
Somebody trying to send DMF.
Someone saw, somebody saw his hand come up, put the lights out. Even if you turn the lights off, we still got a call on him, so. Councilman Lattiser.
I've been beat up before. Seriously, we've heard a ton of comments and conversation regarding this matter this evening. Things that concern me, in addition to what I've already stated, is the fact that we're told numerous times this evening, wait for the budget, wait for the budget, when you see the budget. And I'm kind of feeling like I felt when we had to vote on the schools. And two weeks after we voted on those, we, the voters, things changed. And we're holding a bag. I'm concerned that the decision, and you heard it stated numerous times this evening, that the council is going to make the decision about this when the budget comes, when you set the tax rate. The council is going to set the tax rate. I've been on this council for 11 years, 10 budgets. I've never seen the city council vote anything different than what was suggested by the administration for a tax rate. I've never seen the city council, well, we made an amendment, you made amendments, right? I'm concerned with that because if this comes back to us this year or next year and that tax rate has changed and has flip-flopped, you're gonna wanna make that change? You're, are you gonna wanna make the adjustment that's necessary? So this is being put on to the city council again that we have to make that decision. Because we don't have all of the facts and because we don't have all the information and because it's been said to us in the members of the public, the business community, wait till we get the budget, wait till we get the budget, you deal with it at the budget, then I would like to make a different motion to hold this item until we get the budget. And when we get the budget, which is sometime in May, then we can make a decision. Once we have all the information, once we know what the budget looks like. Right now, we don't have it. The argument perhaps would be-
Councilman, let's get a, you made a motion, so we gotta get a second, then we can do discussion. So-
I thought we already had a second.
Not to hold.
Oh, no, 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 okay, so.
We have a motion on the floor, which has been moved and seconded, which is favorable action.
So what happens as far as my motion to hold?
When would you, you would like to make a motion to hold until-
I would like to make a motion to hold PCR 35-23 until we get the budget.
We need like a date.
Let's, for the sake of the motion, let's say May 8th. Is that acceptable, Councilman?
As long as, when does the administration get us the budget? Mr. Bruce Kaiser's here, director's here, chief staff, whatever.
The hearings are set before the council, the week of May 20, I think they're 23rd, 24th, if possible. May 25th as well, if you need that extra night. I think the concern would be, Councilman, I think Neil spoke this as well, as we all know what the General Assembly schedule is, that-
Director, I just, we need to get a second before we can have a discussion.
Okay.
I'm waiting to hold. On whether to hold. So we're just looking for a motion to hold, but we need, we need a date so we can then get a second.
May 25th.
The May 8th meeting would be the last.
By June 1st, right?
Councilman, the May 8th meeting would be the last meeting prior to budget hearings.
Yeah, but you're not going to get the budget. He just told you, we're not going to get the budget till May 20 something.
Okay, that's when we have budget hearings. But you got, you can make it whatever day you want. Just make the motion, we'll get a second.
We have to set the budget by June 1st, right? Okay, so I make a motion to hold it until May 25th. At that time.
Okay, do we have a second to motion to hold so we can have a discussion? Do we have a second, a motion to hold to the, to May 25th? The motion fails, there's no seconds. Proceed, okay. Councilman, you still have the floor?
No, I'm done. You know, if you're not willing to get all the information before we make a vote, what's the point of having any more conversation? Thank you.
Councilman Snappy.
So the only reason I didn't second this is because I, I'm curious, because my understanding was from Neil is that they're not going to know in time anyway regarding whether or not this passes the General Assembly for the purposes of sending out the notice for residents. So from that perspective, it seems holding wouldn't be necessarily a problem. And at the same time, I'm not entirely sure what, if anything, could change based on what Neil was saying, given that he said he's already run through everything and Neil's always been very transparent with everyone and Jeremy knows firsthand with the Tax Commission. He's sat there for hours and Neil is very upfront and open with people, even when he's telling them things they don't want to hear. So I'm somewhat torn. I just, I'm finding it hard to find a reason to hold other than for the sake of holding it, especially given that we will be around for the budget hearings, at which point we can make sure the stated concerns don't come to fruition, because I think what many people forget is that we all live in work and most of us, actually all of us, good chunk of us, either ourselves or our families own a small business. So we are not immune to the consequences of this by any means. And I, for one, have no intention of letting anything come to pass where the small businesses take a disproportionate of the harm that may come, or may not come, hopefully may not. Furthermore, this administration has been pretty consistent when it comes to taxes as far as their claims. They claimed two years in a row what they would do with taxes and nobody believed them. And then they did exactly what they said they would do. So I don't think it's fair or reasonable to start now saying we don't trust them to do what they said they're going to do, given that they've proved us wrong two years in a row. And I'm, it's not just proved us wrong, that makes it sound like it's minor. Warwick saw tax raises for decades without stopping, no sign of it whatsoever, and out of nowhere, all of a sudden now we have no taxes going up. Two years in a row, mustn't have hurt us for us. So I'm not willing to cry foul until such as attempted or even looks like it's being attempted. As of now, everything indicates nothing but positive intentions. And if that changes, we're all here and I don't particularly care what prior councils did or didn't do. I know what way Councilman Lattiser would vote if these speculative fears came to pass. I know which way I would vote and I could at least guess the way many of my colleagues would vote, so I'm not particularly worried. So that being the case, I'm, that's why I didn't second the hold, that's why I don't feel the need to make a motion to hold, and that's why I'm okay with this resolution passing. And frankly, I didn't bring it up during the committee because some of the attendees, one in particular, were being rude for no reason. So I figured I'd get this out now.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Howe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like just to clarify something that Councilman Lattiser said, because it is now sealed to this, this resolution. We as a council did not vote for the schools. We voted to allow the citizens to vote for the schools. There's, there's a big difference. And now we, now that the voters said they would like to see schools, we are now moving into that next step. So one has something to the other. And that leads me to the next point. I found it interesting that many speakers, not many, some speakers showed up, some are regulars that come in and enjoy personal attacks, but they get an email and they stated, I received an email that said, and I think that I want to commend the administration and Mr. Dupuy for clarifying and stating clearly what this resolution does. If you will, it's another valve added to a pipe of many operating valves that goes to the main, water main. It's yet just another valve to protect the citizens and to look out for the city of Warwick. It's something that has been utilized. And as I believe that needs to be clarified, that Mr. Dupuy said, it is not, just because we passed this, this is the same thing as the school. We are therefore telling the General Assembly, yes, please vote on this, use all your resources, which are much more than the city of Warwick, but use your resources on your recommendations to authorize this valve if it must be used in the future to do our, when we work in our budget. So it has to be passed by the state. So with that said, I found it very interesting that people, and it's unfortunate, because I remember some years ago, people came in and they were terrified, and senior citizens especially, got the email from the same individual who stopped chasing rescues and fire trucks and said that the senior citizens were going to get kicked out of their houses and the evaluations are going to come and everyone's going to be kicked out and everyone's going to, you know, lose their house and the evaluation's going to go through the roof. And if I remember correctly, I think over the last four years, there's been a zero tax hike. This is the fair tactics that is done with a new, a new Facebook page with the same characters. And it's unfortunate that it really brought out a lot of small businesses who are here mainly concerned about their, their businesses and maintaining a business. And the majority of the speakers were just politically agenda-driven or just personally agenda-driven. So I will support this because I think the administration, as Councilman Snappy said, has proven that they are, you know, willing to go the extra mile to protect the citizens. And this council, every member on this council, all nine of us, as citizens and taxpayers in this city, who have family members and loved ones who also pay taxes and work very hard and take time away from our families, we also are expecting the same diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ricks.
What can I say with this? Very funny.
I'm sorry. You asked.
I asked and I got an answer, I suppose, from my colleague. Anyways, getting back to the point, we're going through some very difficult times. A little bit of levity is appreciated, but I think that we can all take a look at the trends. It's not just locally, it's nationally. This is a very unusual phenomenon. There are a lot of houses that the same house, if it was up on the market in 2018 versus if it was up on the market last year, and I know taxes are six months in arrears, and so valuation dates of these revales are December 31, 2018, which is currently in place up until this next revow comes through and that one would be December 31, 2022, in that span of four years. I think it's fair to say that a lot of houses that were valued at $200,000 are now at more like $300,000, a 50% jump. Who lives in those houses that were valued at 200 grand about four years ago? Well, they're generally speaking, people who can least afford a shock. We're concerned about a shock to businesses, that's a valid concern. We don't want to have a tax shock on small businesses or any businesses really, but we also don't want to have a shock on those folks who are the most vulnerable. I think that the way that the word got out about this, the way that this resolution was characterized, was done in a way that led people to have a fear that this is something that it isn't. This isn't about increasing taxes on the businesses, small businesses, large or otherwise. This is about trying to maintain some stability so that those folks who are the very most vulnerable don't get that shock. It's not about shifting this burden so that there's a shock to the small businesses or any sort of business. The intended result of all of this is to give us a tool to mitigate what I think we all see coming is going to be a huge shock to those people whose houses went up 50% in value because they started relatively low and now they're going to be significantly higher. Folks who are on social security, fixed incomes, retired, folks who, you know, maybe, maybe they're not retired. Some of them, we're talking young families, perhaps multiple kids, folks who are, you know, not pulling in $100,000 a year, but rather folks who are below the median income in the city, who are buying those below median value houses. And let's not forget about renters. Renters have had it really bad in recent years. And so if we see taxes take a big jump on these lower value houses, well, guess what landlords are going to do? Pass that cost along to the tenants. Another shock to the system that the most vulnerable don't need. So I would stress that while the, a lot of the comments we heard this evening are about preventing a shock to the business community, that's really not what this tool would do. This is a tool that would allow the city to strike that balance, try to keep things a little bit more stable for the business community, and likewise, try to keep things a little bit more stable for all of those homeowners, all of those renters. There's nothing, it's nothing really more than that. So I will take up more time with those comments. I'm in favor of this and I think that this is a tool that can be used by this city council, can be used wisely whenever this city council has its budget hearings. And every single time that this city council considers using this tool, we will have those public hearings and we will hear from the public who can hold us responsible at that time. And we will, of course, be insisting that we have all that data before we take a vote on the tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Travis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to agree with Councilman Ricks about proper value going up. No one would ever think that Oakland Beach would have old houses that are over $400,000. And that's what we're doing now and it's unbelievable. Also, if you ride around though, you'll see a lot of Massachusetts plates there and they're just taking over the neighborhood. Not only the high prices, but the, you know, out of town people coming to get closer to the water view or whatever reason they're using. But that makes it hot. And I do agree with people, we all have members maybe of our family that have small businesses, so we don't want to hurt anybody, you know, either side. We want to kind of balance it out like the administration says. To get back to the budget part though, Mr. Kaiser, we, we mentioned that the budget hearings would be on the 25th, but basically, don't we get the budget 10 days before?
Yes, you do.
All right, so we'll be getting it around the 15th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick comment. So I want to be certain that everyone is clear that I was not suggesting, implying, or stating that I did not trust Mr. Dupuy. Quite the contrary. I have worked with him often over the years that he's been here. He has been very upfront and I have a great respect for the work that he has done. He's done an amazing job at bringing these abatements down to next to zero. So there was no implication on my part or insinuation on my part of a distrust. You've heard me call for information countless amounts of times on this city council, and that's what I was doing this evening, looking for all the information that I need. You all speak for yourself, what I need and what I'd like to see in making a decision. Just because I disagree with someone does not mean I disrespect someone or I don't trust someone. There's a big difference. As an elected official, I have a right to disagree. Has nothing to do with lack of trust or disrespecting. I feel, given the conversations that we had this evening, it would be important for us to see the actual budget and to get a good sense as to where all of this was going. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this has been moved in favor, so the clerk will call a roll for favorable action on PCR 35-23.
Ms. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
No.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next up is PCR 36-23 Committee Report Public Safety.
Recommend favorable action.
For action, Councilman Gephardt.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Lattiser and Councilman Howe. Any questions or comments on PCR 36-23 that were not asked earlier this evening in committee? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Ms. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
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 Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Snappy. Ms. Travis.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Referral and advertising is PCO 11-23, a zone change, JMR Properties. Next up, we're moving to unanimous consent, so there's going to be two steps in this. Before us is PCR 40-23, a resolution memorializing the General Assembly to enact legislation amending state laws that provide for increased school housing aid for certain school projects to extend the deadlines for commencement and completion of such projects by one year. So the first, what we have to do is, under unanimous consent, are there any members of the council objecting to hear PCR 40-23 at this time? Are there any members of the council? Okay, there has been no objection, so we will now hear PCR 40-23. I do this on behalf of, of the mayor. What this entails is we are looking to do a, a, a resolution to the General Assembly, asking that they will give us some additional time on the ride deadlines of when we need to start construction on schools, the school bond, the 350 school bonds, million dollar school bonds, excuse me, and then when they needed to be completed by. So we're going to ask for an extension in the, in the start, we also need it on the back end. So that is all that this asks for. This is a ride requirement. It has to do with the reimbursement. So what we're, what we are asking them for, to do at this time is only to extend those deadlines. So we would have an extra year to decide if this, if the, the city of Warwick is going to move forward on this or not and still be able to take advantage of those ride reimbursements. So it's, it's not a motion to vote on the schools or anything like that at this time. This is just relating to the ride guidelines that are outlined right now of when we would need to start and when we would need to complete. So that's the case. I need someone to, to move it and get a second and then we can have discussion. So Councilman Howe?
I'd like to move favorable action on PCR 40-23.
Thank you. And second by Councilman Foley. Are there any questions or comments? And we will also take questions from members of the public after the council gets to talk because this was not in committee. So Councilman Ricks.
More of a, I'll try to keep it brief, comment. It's my understanding, and I'll look for clarification from the council solicitor, that this resolution, if the General Assembly were to act on it, does not require us to. that this resolution, if the General Assembly were to act on it, does not require us to delay this project by one year. Instead, it's giving us some additional time, flexibility, make sure that we're, making sure that all of the numbers are adding up. But then, if we, we in the city, I'm talking the school building committee, the school committee, and then the city council going through all of the normal processes, decided that, yes, we want to move forward, then we're not, this legislation would not cause us to be delaying.
Correct, Councilman. This is a resolution that is merely asking the state to give us more time to complete all steps. The actual determination of what and when those steps would be done is a separate process. This is just saying, for the sake of us getting that state reimbursement and that state money, we want as much, we were requesting that they provide an extra year worth of time for us to meet the benchmarks that would require us to get that reimbursement. So yes, you're correct.
Thank you, Councilman. Excellent point, so thank you. Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, this is the first time that, I'm looking at this right now, actually. On page four, line 15, it says, or we'll start with 14, the latter part of it, it says, "So long as the construction of the project commences by December 30, 24, is completed by December 30, 2029, and a $250 million general obligation bond is approved on the November 2019 ballot." So this is basically just boilerplate information that has been right along.
Councilman, this was one drafted by bond counsel and the recommended changes, and what it's saying is, that pot of money that we're getting reimbursed from, that the voters of the state has already approved, we're changing that so that if the funds are coming from that pool of capital that's already authorized, and there was a separate bond that followed another one, we're making sure that regardless of where that, which pot of money it's coming from, we're making sure that the benchmarks are the same for us.
So all the terms and conditions, reimbursement up to 52%, what it qualifies, what it doesn't qualify, et cetera, et cetera, nothing changes, other than we're requesting the General Assembly to give us an additional year to put a shovel in the ground.
And to complete. Two different benchmarks, but yes, an extra year to begin. When in that window is a discretion of a separate body?
So it's also my understanding, I think I misspoke when I just said shovel in the ground. I think initially, if I remember this correctly, that the school department had until the end of December to approve a construction process, not necessarily have a shovel in the ground. Is that correct?
The language that we're working with here is, and the standards that we're meeting is commence the project. And we're not changing what that standard is.
Okay.
It's, the standard right now is we need to commence the project by December 30 of 2023. This would allow an extra year for us to meet the commencement standards without changing what those standards are.
So commence the project does not necessarily mean that we have to have a shovel in the ground and actually stop construction. Commencing the project could be approving to move forward. Is that...
Without, it's to meet the RIDE standards of commencement, which has been viewed or described as a shovel in the ground of sorts to begin the project, but there's more comprehensive standards that RIDE has as part of determining that commencement date, the commencement of the project. This does not change any standard, other than the timing of when we will be judged as to having met the standards or not.
So the only thing we're voting on tonight is to extend the start date and the completion date by one year. Nothing else, zero, nothing, nada.
We are asking the General Assembly to give us an additional window of time due to the unique circumstances that the construction industry is currently in.
And if that should pass, if, for a whole host of reasons, that the city council should decide not to approve the drawdown of the bond, we will still have that option to do so.
Correct. This does not initiate, delay, or deny the issues of the project. What this does is extend the window of time that we could get reimbursement if the General Assembly decided it was so appropriate.
So in other words, we can still vote no on the drawdown.
The future decisions of what to do and when to do it would still be in this body's control.
That's in my simple terms. We still can vote no. Thank you.
What's that?
Give me a few more minutes, and I could certainly find some other things, like I say.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, this was not heard in committee, so I do want to give an opportunity, if there's any members of the public here that would like to speak on 40-23. Darlene, the mic might be off, so you might have to turn it on.
Hello. Darlene Natco, lifelong resident of Warwick, graduate of Warwick Public Schools. I went to Greenwood, Winman, and Tollgate. Graduated in 1984 from Tollgate. I've been teaching English since 1988, 33 of those 35 years here in Warwick. I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, and my family owns a small business here in Warwick. And I'm also president of the Warwick Teachers Union. And obviously, I am in support of this resolution to give the city more time to meet the standards and to still receive our 52% reimbursement, 52.7 or 8% reimbursement for the schools. Just a reminder, the citizens of Warwick voted to put forth a $350 million bond to build two new high schools. The citizens of Warwick did that because they recognized that our current high schools are woefully inadequate to educate the children of Warwick in 21st century learning. I know people call that out as a buzzword, but what 21st century learning means, even something as simple as having enough electrical capacity in the building to sustain modern technology. Right now, Pilgrim High School cannot be upgraded anymore. There can't be any more electrical panels added, and Tollgate is this far away from being there. I could take you on a tour of what the B3 floor, the closet, the bookroom closet for English looks like with all of the wires, the spaghetti hanging out of the little glass boxes that they keep erecting to try to contain it. It's regularly 130 degrees in that room. That can't be good for wiring. The buildings, Tollgate should never have been opened as a school. It has rooms, I teach in one of them, no windows. I mean, these schools need to be replaced, and our kids deserve a proper learning environment. So there shouldn't be any question, since the voters voted for this, that these projects will move forward. This current resolution before you gives time to meet the standards for commencement, whether that's a shovel in the ground, or plans voted on, or an architect and consultant in place. At one point, I heard the city was looking to hire its own consultant to check the numbers coming from the school department. I don't know where the city is with that process, but I do know that city leaders met with RIDE and the school department, and at a certain point, this needs to go forward. Other cities and towns are moving projects forward. The state, as was just referenced in the language of this resolution, the state has already passed two bonds for construction reimbursement for schools. Warwick tax dollars are going to the state of Rhode Island, and the state of Rhode Island will be giving those tax dollars to other cities and towns. So our Warwick money will go to Pawtucket, or Newport, or Cranston, or wherever else new schools are being built. And meanwhile, Warwick will sit here with aging, disintegrating schools. So the voters voted, the city needs to move forward. If this resolution helps to do that, please pass it, and let's get these new schools built as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak at this time? Any other members of the public? Okay, hearing none? Are there any other comments from members of the council? Okay, it has been moved and seconded for favorable action, so the clerk will call a roll for favorable action on PCR 40-23.
Mr. McAllister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Howe.
Yes.
Mr. McAdmore.
Yes.
Mr. Ricks.
Yes.
Ms. Sinapi.
Yes.
Ms. Travis.
Yes.
9 yes, motion passes.
Thank you. The motion passes. We are now in Ward 1. Anything to docket under unanimous consent? Pass. Ward 2? Pass. Ward 3?
One item, Mr. President.
Under unanimous consent?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, not under unanimous consent, I'm sorry. Pass.
Okay. Ward 4?
Pass.
Ward 5?
Pass.
Ward 6?
Pass.
Ward 7 passes. Ward 8?
Pass.
Ward 9? Pass. Councilwoman Travis.
If there be no further business of this honorable body, I move to a docket session.
All of those favorite moving to docket session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are now in the docket session. Ward 1, anything to docket at this time? Pass. Ward 2?
One item. So this is a very tentative title, until the Tax Relief Commission comes up with its recommendations. Tentative title, Resolution for Hearing and Action Relative to Recommendations of the Tax Relief Commission.
Ward 3?
One item, Mr. President, an ordinance, a resolution amending the city ordinance, section 40, correction, section 64-6, military time for city employees.
Ordinance Committee.
Thank you.
Ward 4?
Pass.
Ward 5?
Pass.
Ward 6?
Pass.
Ward 7 passes? Oh, actually, I have one. Docket?
Pass.
Ward 9?
Yeah, I have two. The first is an ordinance, an ordinance to dissolve the alarm review panel and enable the Warwick Police Department to administer the duties and responsibilities currently performed by the panel. Yes, you may.
Well, I think I know who's on that panel.
Ordinance. The second is a resolution, a resolution to the city finance department to explore and provide a report on potential cost savings through consolidation of services between the city and the school department, and between the city and other municipalities.
And I do have one to docket, I'm just pulling it up here real quick. This would be a resolution in support of a Clerks Association bill to the General Assembly, inter-gov. And there is no business before us, any more business before us, so we adjourn. Thank you.